All right, I'll call in, call our meeting to order.
The city of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths reside here. The city council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. The scheduled minister is unable to be here, but city attorney Scott Smith has graciously offered to do this.
Please stand and stay standing for our pledge allegiance.
Kind of only father, we come before you at the beginning of this meeting grateful for the chance that we have to live in a free land, to be surrounded by the natural beauties that we have and the human capital and friendship that we enjoy as a city. We're grateful for leaders who commit time and their talents and energy and sacrifice to guide and to ponder and to direct this community. We invoke thy spirit and thy blessing tonight, as this council deliberates it, there will be wisdom and understanding and thoughtfulness and pragmatism and fellowship as these proceedings occur. We ask you to bless those and be with those who teach and to lead, that coach and that counsel and provide comfort to the young and the elderly of our community. We're grateful for those efforts and for the difference that it makes in our lives. We ask these things of thee and for thy blessing on these proceedings in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please throw me the pledge allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, council member Ferguson. Here. Council member Hamm.
Here.
Council member Ward.
Here.
Mayor Patem Bain.
Here.
And Mayor Schwartz.
Here.
First item on the agenda is recognition of Lieutenant Colonel Warren Cook, outgoing commanding officer of Camp Pendleton.
Good evening, council. Wanted to introduce several people that have been very instrumental in the special relationship between the city of San Clemente and Second Battalion Fourth Marines, which is our adopted Marine Corps unit. First person that I would like to introduce is Thor Kuhn, who has, who is an Eagle Scout candidate, who in fact has, for the barbecue, collected over 504 gifts for the children of Second Battalion Fourth Marines, which is an incredible feat. We had a barbecue and a Christmas party for them in December at Camp Pendleton. The second person that I would like to introduce would be Lieutenant Colonel Warren Cook, who's been the commanding officer of Second Battalion Fourth Marines for the last couple of years. He will be going through a change of command next week and we will sorely miss him. He's been outstanding in his relationship with San Clemente. And I also like to thank the city of San Clemente for their support for Second Battalion Fourth Marines and the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce. And along with the Marine Monument of Park Semper Fi, we put on an incredible barbecue. So I'd like to introduce first Nancy Hunt from the Chamber of Commerce for a few words.
Thank you, Wayne, and good evening, council members. It's just a joy to be here and I love the military. Came to San Clemente as a Marine wife, fell in love with the city, and I love the military. They stand on the wall for us and they say, "There will be no harm to you today." And I'm grateful for that.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce Thor Kuhn, who is the Eagle Scout candidate.
I'm Thor Kuhn. I worked on this Eagle project for probably like three months now, or two months, and I wanted to help others for Christmas, so I gathered, or helped gather, gathered presents for the Second Battalion Fourth Marines for Christmas. And then on December 14th, they had a barbecue where we passed out the presents and we, the kids had fun and got a lot of presents.
Thank you. Could we click to see all the presents that they, they collected? Look at all those presents that they collected. Just incredible for all them. I'd like to introduce now Lieutenant Colonel Warren Cook, who's been the, who's been the commanding officer of Second Battalion Fourth Marines for the last couple of years.
I just want to, first of all, as, as the son of a Marine.
All right, you've got good DNA.
I, I have very much respect the Marine Corps. That's why Dad told me I had to go in the Air Force during Vietnam. But anyway, but we've met before and I think the Second Battalion Fourth Marines are a great outfit and we love them here in San Clemente. And I want to give you this that you can take with you on your next assignment and next travels and hopefully remember us sometime, come back and visit us sometime. But this is for a certificate of recognition as presented to you, Lieutenant Colonel Warren Cook, for your patriotic service as commanding officer for the Second Battalion and Fourth Marines. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, council members, humbled by this, but as we know, there's about 1,200 cocky, obnoxious men and women who are spoiling for a brawl back at Camp Pendleton. And the love that Kathy mentioned of the Corps and of national defense is palpable here in San Clemente. And whether it's Kathy and the chamber wrapping their arms around the Marines for this extravagant barbecue and however many hundreds of toys for a lot of Marines and sailors who frankly lived below the poverty line and couldn't really afford any of that without the help of the community. So I think the crown jewel that everyone can see was the Sheriff's Department and all the backflips that they did and checks that they wrote to make this parade happen and the numerous ceremonies that Wayne puts on and Bob Novello treats us to afterwards for receptions. That's kind of all the stuff people can see. But I think one of the special things about San Clemente and typifies the best of San Clemente is the Marine or the sailor that goes and patronizes a business and someone comes and pays for their meal, buys them a drink, helps them out when they're in time of need. It's, it's really an extraordinary community that we have here. And I can't think of a better garrison town frankly on the planet for a service member to be calling home than San Clemente. So it's bittersweet that I'm leaving and I'll miss a lot of your considered friends. But the next guy coming behind me is bigger, faster, stronger, better looking. And the cool thing about it is Lieutenant Colonel Byrne used to be a Lance Corporal in Two Four back in the early 90s and he's coming back as the commander. So this is much appreciated and I'll miss you very much. Thanks.
So on behalf of the city of San Clemente, San Clemente Chamber of Commerce and the Marine Monument at San Clemente, I'd like to present you with a photo here, a picture of Park Semper Fi at the Marine Monument, and which you guys can hang in the hallway, Second Battalion Fourth Marines. So every, every Marine that comes through there knows that we have a Marine monument here in San Clemente.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks.
And next is a presentation to Jake Ron, Financial Services Officer, and Sandy Chiswick, Senior Accountant of a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Budgeting that was awarded to the city by the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers.
I'm going to be very brief, Eric Sun, Assistant City Manager. We don't get Jake out very often, so it's good that he gets a little bit of face time and he gets to wear a tie, which is not the norm for Jake. Just to give Jake major kudos, he's the type of supervisor who, while Sandy's being recognized tonight as well, she's an amazing accountant that works for us, Jake said, "Nope, you go home, get home early, I'll take care of it and I'll do it." This award is important because this staff worked tirelessly, tirelessly to make sure that our budget and our LTFP are as tight as can be. And Jake deserves all the credit. And so with that, I'm not going to say anymore. I'm going to make Jake say something though, just to put him on the spot, and then the mayor, of course.
I just want to thank council for all their support and the city manager for his support. All that support just makes putting together a quality budget document so much easier and I just want to thank you all, so.
And I want to thank you for those small little documents of budgets that we have to then go through and read after the fact and try to decipher them. That's such nice bedtime reading. But I really appreciate the opportunity to provide you with the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers Certificate of Award. This is for the excellent award for fiscal year 2018, 2019, the operating budget. And we received this and I wanted to present this to you.
Thank you very much. Did you get it? Okay.
Next is a report from Kia Mortazavi, Orange County Executive Director of Development concerning the Orange County Transportation Authority Long Range Transportation Plan.
Is it here? All right. Ron? Good evening, good evening, Mayor Schwartz and council members. I'm Kia Mortazavi with Orange County Transportation Authority, as I was introduced. I'm the Director of Planning and it's my pleasure tonight to talk to you about the Long Range Transportation Plan, which was recently approved. So again, thank you for the invitation and I would like to walk you through the major elements of the Long Range Transportation Plan, beginning with the major, I guess, why do we do this and what's the purpose? OCTA updates the Long Range Transportation Plan every four years to evaluate how well the planned improvements are working and will address our travel needs over the next 20 to 25 years, to identify transportation strategies that may be necessary to correct course if needed, and to define our list of projects that should be considered in the Southern California's, the regional transportation plan that makes our projects eligible for federal funding. So in developing the plan, OCTA considers several factors. One is the current commitments. What do we have, so to speak, that we're committed to, that we need to deliver? How much money reasonably we can expect over the next 25 years? Some of the, what are the new regulations that we need to acknowledge? Feedback from stakeholders and communities as we go out and update the plan? And changes in populations and population and demographics. And the changes in demographics is one of the major drivers for our plan because obviously that's, that's what driving it. And for example, you know, between the last plan and this plan, we just kind of picked up the impacts of the recession and how people kind of moved around and changed their driving habits. That was, for example, a big change. So looking at this plan, between 2015 and 2040, we, so we're kind of taking a 25-year horizon, population is expected to grow by 10% or 311 residents. Employment at the same times is expected to grow by 17% or 275,000 jobs. So taking, so we kind of looked at it as that, well, what would happen if we had all those people but essentially today's transportation system? So that's just kind of holding everything else constant, our transportation system constant. Kind of see that if we do that congestion will increase by 66%. That's obviously, it's not a reality because, you know, we are going to be doing projects, but it was just the sense that a test that we run just to kind of see what, what happens if we do nothing. So that's obviously, that's not a future that we want to strive for. So over the next several slides, I'll kind of walk you through what our vision is for the future. So we have, in Orange County, we have roughly 1,700 lane miles of freeways and lane miles, if you were to basically look at all the lanes on the freeways, put them end to end, that's basically what lane mile is. And Orange County, that's what we have. That includes obviously the freeways as, as well as the toll roads. The LRTP, or the Long Range Plan, proposes to increase the capacity by 13% or 214 lane miles, primarily delivering the projects that were promised to the voters as part of the Measure M. So that kind of goes to what I mentioned earlier, delivering our current commitments. And in addition, for example, we have additional, so some of, one of, some of those projects are the, the one that was recently completed is the I-5 carpool lanes between, between PCH and Pico that recently opened last June, as well as some of the last June, as well as some of the future additions that I will talk to. And some of the additional projects that we're talking about is the extension of those carpool lanes all the way to San Diego County line. That's kind of shown in gold on the bottom half of your, on the kind of right side, right bottom of the slide. So just, I should note that the plan also assumes that the transportation corridor agencies will widen the existing facilities, which equates to another 150 lane miles, and that are shown in purple. The southern extension of the 241 is not part of the plan, but it is noted as a concept that requires further study and definition and support before being added to the plan. So it's something that we acknowledge that's out there, but we're not including it for now because it's not defined. So even with the planned highways and tollways, Caltrans believes that our carpool lanes will not be meeting the federal standards. The federal standard is that carpool lane during, in simple terms, during the peak periods should be operating at 45 miles an hour or better. And so their strategy is that we should, they should probably increase the occupancy requirement to make, to have fewer cars there, but they believe that if they do that, that will have too few of the cars, or too few cars in there. And so the next level is to allow some of the other cars to basically pay a toll to get back in the lane. So that is a concept that is included in the plan, but it's something that we will be working with Caltrans to prioritize on an as-needed basis. So right now, no specific projects are defined and it's something that, you know, we're looking to work with Caltrans and see what would come forward if, if and when it's needed. So with respect to local streets, we have about 6,400 lane miles of arterials in the county. And the plan assumes that we, that lane miles will be increased by about 10%. That's primarily through the build-out of the general plans that local agencies have today. So we're not proposing any additional plan, any additional roadways that are not on the plans. So in that, so that is either building, you know, closing critical gaps or widening streets that are not, that are not at their general plan ultimates. So those are the kinds of projects that are assumed. And we'll, Measure M provides support for those kinds of activities through providing funding. Now, one thing about the arterial system in Orange County is that it carries about half the load, half the mileage is on the arterial system. And so we're fortunate that we have such a balanced system, but so on one end, that's why it's important that we make sure that it works efficiently. And for that, and for that purpose, we also encourage communities and agencies to work together to synchronize traffic signals across jurisdictions. So we assume that we will continue to have the signal synchronization across these network of arterials. And for example, in your area, Avenue de Pico, El Camino Real, and Vista Hermosa are good candidates that are assumed in the plan to be, to stay coordinated. So with respect to active transportation, something that we're also acknowledging that we need to do, we can do better on. And the plan assumes that we will be expanding the county's road, bikeway network by 58%. So that allows people to basically use it for the first mile or the last mile of a trip, either to get to a train station or at the other end to get to the place of work or for shorter commutes. So over the past several years, we have completed, basically worked with the local jurisdictions to have a county-wide plan where everybody agrees what the regional priorities ought to be so that when you build trails, they actually go someplace. And so we're working to implement that and that's shown basically underwrite. And then secondarily, we're working with agencies to implement those. And an example of that is the OC Loop, which is in the northern part of the county. And that kind of starts with the Santa Ana River and the Peace Coast Highway and going up Coyote Creek. Other examples are, and as I can kind of update the slide here, you could see there's a regional connectors where we're looking to, for example, take a look at a cross-county connector, beginning with the El Camino Real Class 4 Bike Trail that will then connect to that trail that kind of goes all the way across the county and connects to the Pacific Electric Rideaway all the way across. And then from there, obviously, you can branch out to other trails. So those are the kinds of improvements that can be made and we envision that for the future. So with respect to transit, that's a key element. And the vision is to grow the bus transit ridership by focusing fixed route services in higher demand areas and looking to serve the lower demand areas with new service models. The LRTP looks to build ridership in the central core of the county by implementing 11 high-capacity corridors, shown on the map, kind of in the bright blue, and including OC Streetcar, that you can see the initial, the alignment basically on the left. At the same time, we assume that we will be able to continue providing services such as OC Flex, which was recently introduced. That's a demand-responsive, but basically there is no fixed route to it. And continue to fund services such as the San Clemente, the Trolley, as well as the Rideshare Partnerships that this, for example, San Clemente has with Lyft, as long as we can assure that our productivity standards are met. So those are things that we include. And if we were able to pull that off, the strategy will, that allows us to improve transit service by, increase the supply of it by 30%, and that's a, and that will help attract more ridership to the service. We're also assuming that by 2040, the transit fleet would be 100% zero emission. That's one of the regulations that were recently kind of put in place. So we're going to work over the next 25 years to meet that regulation. So with respect to rail, we're also assuming that we're going to be increasing rail service on all the three lines that serve Orange County. And we go from roughly 54 trains that serve Orange County today to 86 trains. Most of the service increase obviously is going to be Laguna de Gal North. We have limited track capacity south of Laguna de Gal, but the service that goes from south of Laguna de Gal to Oceanside that basically serves San Clemente is retained, so that's there. But most of the increase is basically going to the north and as well as Los Angeles. So what happens if we do all these things? I mean, what's the end result? We see that in comparison with the 2014 no-build, the trend 2040, which is basically what we're labeling our plan, that's shown in orange, it allows us to perform, it performs better compared to the do-nothing across all measures. And you could see that when it comes to hours of delay, we're doing better. Our travel time, transit trips are increased, freeway speeds improve, and arterial speeds improve. And essentially allows us to get back to today's conditions and, but that's acknowledging that we're also accommodating 1.7 more trips. So we're able to address the growth issues and so is the economic vitality of the county and is making, and make sure that our transportation system's still viable and provides the accessibility and mobility that it's providing today. The performance, so, but we recognize that that's not, you know, it doesn't really stop there and we need to do more. And so in the, the plan, within the plan, we propose to do, we have some short-term action plans. And that includes activities and planning that's focused within Orange County. And an example of that, and I'll get, I'll mention that later a little bit. Other ones are regional activity, regional studies. And one of them is, for example, working with Los Angeles to better connect our transit services to their services, especially that we have the 2028 Olympics coming and Orange County is one of the venues, for example. So we need to plan for that and be prepared. Some of the emerging, emerging issues, I mean, there's talk of, you know, we're still tracking where autonomous vehicles are at and how, for example, we should, we can be better prepared when, when those technologies are actually, are introduced. As well as outreach to make sure that people are aware of the type of services that OCTA has so that they can basically take, you know, use the choices that may be available to them. So I would, I would say some of the specific actions that OCTA would undertake would be working with SCAG, and that's the Southern California Association of Governments, to make sure that our, our projects, what we expect to complete or is included in the long-range, in the regional transportation plan. So that's a critical element. As well as, we want to be working to advance planned projects and short-term action plans. And one of those is the South County Multimodal Study, where we will revisit the mobility needs and priorities that were previously evaluated in this area in roughly around the 2008 time period. A lot has happened since then. As I said, the demographics have changed, some of the key projects like the I-5 carpool lane projects have been completed. We have more MetroLink service, for example, going. Some of the projects are still on the, are expected to be, you know, completed, such as completion of that minor 0.9 miles of Ortega Highway, making sure that that's completed. And some projects have changed. There is a settlement agreement and we know that foothills, the extension of foothills is not going to be there and we don't know what's going to be there, but we're trying to make sure that, you know, we are prepared and we're providing the choices that community and the travelers expect from us. So these will then allow us to basically be better prepared for our next version of the plan that comes up in 2022. But in the meantime, we'll be working with, with our partners in, in the region to make sure that the current projects are included in the 2020 Regional Transportation Plan. So I know I went a little bit quickly. I didn't know how much time I was allotted, but I wanted to give you a quick glimpse of what's included in the plan. And I'm here, so that kind of wraps it up for me, but I'm happy to answer any questions or, you know, go back to any areas that you have questions on.
Thank you very much. Council members, Kathy.
Kia, for all of the improvements that OCTA has made to San Clemente on I-5, we'll let you talk as long as you want.
Okay.
We appreciate hearing from you. I have a question. You said the 241 extension is only listed as a concept because it's not defined.
Correct.
But recently, SCAG just finished their Long Range Regional Transportation Plan. How is the 241 listed in SCAG's plan? Do you know?
The, what's included in the 2016 Regional Transportation Plan is basically what's referred to as the green alignment, which is no longer an option because, by virtue of the settlement. So we have communicated with SCAG, our list of projects, so that's been transmitted. And SCAG has started the work on the 2020 Regional Transportation Plan. And that's roughly a 10-month process, I should say, eight, one-year process and by the time they finish the analysis. So they're working towards that and then, so the next version of the SCAG plan will be consistent with the OCTA plan.
That is my question.
That is correct.
So it should be consistent because it's also been taken out of the circulation element for the county.
Correct.
So it all should match so that our regional planning is correct.
They kind of build on each other, so they're looking at the local level as to what, what our plans are and they kind of build on that. And so it's just a matter of time.
Okay. So should there be anything that the city of San Clemente should comment on or that's already part of the plan as far as what OCTA has sent to them? It's already in the works?
It is already in the works, but cities, you know, you have the option of providing input to SCAG normally as part of the regional transportation plan.
All right. Thank you very much.
Dan, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation and coming down.
My pleasure.
As part of the, the South Orange County Multimodal Study.
Correct.
Is OCTA going to take a look at the arterials that are already listed on the NPAH and evaluate whether some of those arterials should be completed, for example, before, say, new roads are added to the NPAH that don't exist right now? Is that something that you'll do as part of that process to do any traffic circulation analysis?
In short, yes. We should be looking at that. I think we, we work very hard with local agencies to make sure that what we are assuming is a realistic version of the arterial system. A lot of cities have streets on their regional, on their circulation elements. And we want to make sure that, number one, we're consistent with the circulation element, but also focusing on the, making sure that we're reflecting segments that are actually going to be completed. And work towards some sort of an agreement where the sections that are not going to be completed, for example, there is a way to address those. So we don't want to ignore that because I think when development is done or any, everybody ties back to the circulation element of the local agencies. And, and so we need to kind of be consistent in that sense as well.
And so when you do, when you do traffic analysis and consistent with that study at that time, are you just going to be looking at potential projects?
We're going to be looking at the cities, the cities' circulation elements. That's what we normally use.
And the county's NPAH as well?
And the county's master plan, yes. And the county's circulation element, for the unincorporated areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, all right. The only thing I want to, you know, besides saying we love what you did to our freeway, thank you very much. And please continue south. That would be really nice. Has there been discussion of having, completing Lapada all the way through to, to the freeway or to Pusnidas? Has that been, has that too detailed for you?
The, the Lapada, I believe, I'm just, I'm trying to, trying to kind of understand what reference you were.
Lapada now, we, now goes all the way north. It's connected all the way north, comes all the way south, and it dead-ends on the south end before the base. I just wondered if there was any discussion going through as far as finishing off Lapada for an arterial route to the south end of the freeway?
At this point, there isn't because we're looking into this, you know, for example, one source would be the county's circulation element and as long, if it's something there, we would. But as part of the study, we could be looking at what other options there may be. I know, for example, San Clemente did a, prepare a circulation study, a traffic study. So we could be looking at studies like that and what came out of that. So we'll use studies like that as well.
All right. Thank you very much. If there's another thing, thank you for coming here. I really appreciate it.
All right. My pleasure. My pleasure.[1682.83][1682.86](applause)
And next is a toll road update. And I have some cards on this item.
First one up is Amanda Quintanilla.
Hi, it's Quintanilla, but thank you. I was close enough.
I tried.
Great. Good evening. I usually speak at the TCA Board of Directors meetings against toll road plans that will destroy San Clemente or San Juan Capistrato, or about First and Fourth Amendment violations that we experienced due to the TCA at the public forum in 2017. Last year, the TCA silenced us by turning off the microphones during our speaking time, preventing the audience from hearing us and those streaming live. They, the TCA didn't want, they didn't want people to hear what the letter from Mr. Johnson, the OCTA CEO, wrote to Mr. Crayman. Mr. Johnson addressed that the information that the TCA provided to the Senate Transportation and Housing Committee appeared to be out of context or potentially misleading and overlooked the regional planning process that underscores the benefits of a multimodal approach to help meet future population, housing, and employment growth needs. Additionally, this letter stated the TCA has no authority to study the options since the OCTA has been actively planning and delivering effective transit, traffic solutions for more than 30 years. Their M1, MM2 plans are in effect and it renders the TCA as a and it renders the TCA as necessary. Tonight, I'm speaking about the TCA plans about adding four additional lanes to the I-5, rendering El Camino, Riel, and Avenida del Presidente basically into one-way streets. I've included some pictures to show how close the freeway is to these streets. The two additional lanes, Plaza Emergency Lane and/or a sound barrier wall, will destroy many homes, businesses, streets, churches, and communities that would be affected. In addition, existing bridges and on-ramps and off-ramp, off-ramps would all, would have to be changed and would be desecrating. Here on this picture is, of course, you know, South San Clemente on Del Presidente, and if you see the emergency lane there to your left, basically that would be that one additional lane. So then, where that wall is, let's say that is that little painted line on the freeway. So then the next lane would be from that wall, basically, to where that bike lane ends. And then the emergency lane, if there is one, that would be that street going north on Del Presidente. So basically, we really don't have that much space. So also, we have to, you know, keep in mind that it's on a curve. So we have to realize, okay, how much is that going to cut into that as well? So you're really cutting it close with Del Presidente being a one-way street. Also, I think on the next picture, I don't have the, the, there, there, oh, sorry. The next picture also shows the closeness between the, you know, the first, the emergency lane, which would be another first lane, then up the little ramp there, second. So then there's an elevation issue there, and then the emergency lane, which also would be on, going north on Del Presidente. So we really don't have much space, and I think I'm out of time, too. Sorry. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Michelle Schumacher.
Good evening, Council. First of all, I just want to thank you. That toll road forum was incredible. I was so happy that the city was engaging with the residents. I think you will all agree that it was really well-attended, and anything the city can be doing for education and getting the word out there, we'd appreciate. We were really concerned about a recent article that said, you know, "Have the toll road go around us or somewhere." Let's cut to the chase. The TCO's, TCA owes billions of dollars. Billions! They owe billions of dollars. The 73 was supposed to be free three years ago. The Foothills collected so much money in development fees from San Clemente and hasn't built a damn thing in over 20 years. If someone's going to be building roads, it shouldn't be someone who built roads 20 years ago, and when they did it, did a crappy job at that, had to be redone by Caltrans, resurfaced, great cost to the taxpayers. I think Lieutenant Warren Cook mentioned that residents at the base are living below the poverty level. Only 4% of the population will be able to use a toll road. The majority of the population cannot afford it. So it's $2 billion, so less than 4% can drive on a toll road insane. We do not support the addition of toll lanes on the I-5 freeway. If you look at, it's just going to be too damaging with our soil. Even homes that were 40 feet away from the I-5 when it was expanded experienced great damage, structural damage from the pile driving. So it's just not worth, if your house isn't taken by eminent domain, if your business isn't taken, it's going to prove to be too damaging to surrounding properties that are not taken. It's just not worth it. I'm curious as to why the city council would support anything when our own traffic studies have shown that the benefit in traffic relief is so little. We've taken Sig Alert pictures for two times a day for over two years. South County doesn't have the mobility issues that mid and North Orange County have. In addition, if you do let the TCA in, there'll be extensive development that goes with it. Also, I wanted to just cover that, I spoke with a gentleman the other day. He improved property in San Clemente. His TCA fees alone, $48,000. Imagine if the residents in San Clemente got to enjoy his space with that additional $48,000 improvement, or in his mind, I'm sure, which would have been even better, because that was just one of the fees for permitting and everything else that he went through, to not have to have that hefty fee. So, you know, the TCA, they're, they have no support for any of these proposals. They didn't even have public input for this new Lisa Bartlett thing. They had absolutely no public input for the toll roads, lanes on the I-5. They have no authority or jurisdiction on the I-5. Measure M2 funds, we never voted to have those be used for toll lanes on the I-5 either. Nobody said, "We're going to do and pass Measure M2." That's an extra tax on our freeway. So I really hope you guys will help with education and keep up the great work.
Thank you. Patricia Holloway.
Yes, I'm Patricia Holloway. I'm the trustee representing San Clemente on the Capistrano Unified School Board, and I want to say congratulations to Kathy Ward for your reelection, and welcome to Laura Ferguson and Dan Bain. I have two points that I'd like to share with the city council tonight. First, I'd like to update the community on the status of the school district's lawsuit related to the proposed Oso Bridge project, which we believe will facilitate the extension of the Foothill South. Our overall intent is to protect the health and welfare of our students and staff at district schools that are in the path of or in proximity to the bridge and various proposed alignments, including routes that would encroach on, on De San Clemente High School. Back in December 2017, CUSD filed its own lawsuit against the TCA, the county, and Caltrans regarding the Oso Bridge project. The proposed bridge would be built by the county right across from Tesoro High School in Los Flores. After conversations with the county broke down with no relief offered to CUSD, the district filed the lawsuit alleging multiple violations of SEQA. Among these, CUSD believes that the county incorrectly approved the Oso Bridge project at the staff level when this major development should have been approved, well, should have been the subject of its own EIR, not an addendum, and reviewed at a public meeting before the County Board of Supervisors. Unfortunately, the trial court ruled that the district's lawsuit on Oso Bridge was barred by the, by SEQA's statute of limitations. The district disagreed with this ruling, and our board voted in March 2018 to appeal the trial court's decision. The appeal court has not set a court date for our case yet. We are hoping that it will be sometime in February this year, but this has not been confirmed. Our board is committed to ensuring that our students, families, and staff are protected from the harmful air pollution, noise, and traffic impacts of the Oso Bridge project and future extension of the 241. The second point I want to make deals with the TCA's 2018 South County Traffic Relief Effort Draft Project Study Report. The report outlines a number of alternative toll road routes through South Orange County, four of which of our serious, are of serious concern to the school district due to their close proximity to several of our schools. We feel it's critical to inform our school communities about these proposed alignments, including Alternative 13, 14, 17, and 21. Therefore, we're holding a public discussion of these alternatives at our next school board meeting, and that's on Thursday, not Wednesday, but Thursday, January 24th, at 7:00 PM at our school district offices in San Juan Capistrano. The presentation will be made by our legal counsel and deputy superintendent. It'll be number two on our agenda, so early on the agenda, and we're hoping that San Clementeans will attend and participate in the meeting. I'm hoping that your passion about this issue will inspire families who attend San Juan Hills High School, Essencia, K-8, and Tesoro High School to, you know, unify with us and, and fight these alignments. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Patricia, real quick, is there any way we can get that as a city announcement or a press release or something to notify folks who maybe aren't watching tonight that that meeting's coming up?
Appreciate it. Thanks. Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allowed three minutes, which should give his or her presentation.
Hold on, I think, do you have a card there from someone that wanted to speak on TCA?
I'm one of the usual suspects. I turned in a card. I just need three minutes. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Mark McGuire, resident of San Clemente. Thank you for the presentation by OCTA. I got to tell you, I have a lot more confidence in OCTA than TCA, by a mile, country mile. I'll try to go quickly tonight. I know all five on the council are against all of the TCA's latest proposals, and I know that we have the TCA on its heels regarding these proposals, partly because of our community's efforts, and partly because the underlying traffic justification for any extension of the 241 is just not bearing out. So what I would ask is that we keep our eyes on the prize of stopping the 241 where it ends now at Oso. We need to stay united and focused on that effort. I understand that many people in San Clemente at one point felt that the original 241 extension around town was needed, but the actual traffic growth and future projections now show convincingly that no extension of the 241 to any point along the I-5, or even beyond its current endpoint at Oso, is needed. It's simply not needed. Regarding Supervisor Bartlett's recent proposal to examine extending Los Petronas Parkway south from Cow Camp Road, I would say this. A precondition to even evaluating such an extension must be a guarantee that Los Petronas can never become part of the 241, told or untold. It can never become part of the 241. It must remain a county arterial. And if that guarantee is made, then we can start to look at, at least the, the component that would go south from Cow Camp to Planning Area 5 on Rancho Mission Viejo, and what I handed out was a portion of the master plan of arterial highways that already shows an arterial that goes from Cow Camp into Planning Area 5. And so the concept of replacing that road, which is called Cristianos Road, with the, with the extension of Los Petronas Parkway seems to make sense. You know, it, there will be a need for a road into Planning Area 5, and Los Petronas Parkway as that arterial and the only arterial makes sense, in my opinion. I think that, that would make sense with the proviso that it's guaranteed that it stays a county arterial. The notion of extending that road then west to Lapada and connecting it at some point along Lapada is another issue entirely that I won't try to address in, in the 41 seconds I have left. But what I would say is that that would be a new road. It's a departure from any roads that we've had in the past, and so scrutiny of that needs to be, you know, exacting, and we really need to figure out, is it necessary? What would it accomplish? What would the cost, you know, impacts be? And is that a justifiable concept at some point in the future? But, but we're not there yet. But again, if we keep our eyes focused on the fact that there is no need for an extension of the 241 past Oso, I think we're close to achieving our goals. Thank you.
Our first speaker for our oral communications, Part One, is Brad Malamute.
Good evening, Council. I want to address an issue that is near and dear to me, and that's, and it's not personal at all. We have great representation in the city, but I think, I want to re, say what I say to this council numerous times in the past, that BB and K has a conflict acting both as city attorney and litigation counsel. The city attorney's job is to review the legal bills of outside litigation fees, firms, and yet he's reviewing his own firm, and yet he has a fiduciary duty to his law partners to maximize billing. He has duty to the city to minimize billing. This is an unavoidable conflict, and it's an undeniable conflict, and it's time to end. This council should demand that BB and K serve in one capacity or the other, either city attorney or litigation attorney. I asked Mr. Smith tonight to acknowledge the conflict and to select which one he would like his firm to do. I asked the council to make a rule that divides these jobs and make sure that two separate law firms or a lawyer in-house and an outside law firm are used. I, I suggest that council look into hiring an inside, full-time city attorney that should, would avoid the conflict and could review legal bills, and hopefully handle the small litigation we have without the huge expenses we have now. Finally, I think it's important that no matter who we hire, starting today, we should demand most favored nation rates. The law firms, especially at $2 million a year, are giving us the least expensive rate they charge for any municipal client. Why should we, the largest probably municipal client in Orange County, pay the highest rates, which it appears that we're doing right now? Finally, earlier tonight, a council member attacked me personally and didn't provide me time to respond. I don't want to respond, but I'd say that we need to be civil in this town. We don't need to attack people. I was promised we wouldn't, and yet council members, okay, council member did. I don't want to signal him or her out. That's not important. But what I do want to say is, we're all trying to do what's best for the city. We can disagree on what that is, and that's why we have three minutes to speak to the council. But it should not become personal. It should be issues-based. Apparently, that was the rule the council adopted recently, but don't seem to apply to themselves. I think it would be good, and I think the citizens should also follow that rule. Attacking people is just wrong. I don't think anybody has bad intentions in this town. So let's all work together. Let's, if we disagree, that's okay. But we should be civil, and in the future, if you do attack an individual, I ask you to provide that time for that individual to respond. It's, it's, it's not proper to attack somebody and not give them the time to respond. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is, I'm going to mess this up, Teri Quah.
Good evening, Mayor Swartz, city council members and staff. I'm Teri Otsuki Quah, resident of San Clemente. I'm here again, representing many residents who would like to see the city adapt community choice energy. I want to mention that we all appreciate the continued efforts by staff and council members in reaching out to potential CCA partner cities. First, I have an announcement that our South County CCA group will be having workshop forum for city representatives and the public on March 7th in Dana Point and March 28th in San Juan Capistrano. So we'll be sending out details about that, and we hope to see you there. Although I have addressed the city council on a number of occasions about CCA, I'd like to reiterate a few of the benefits. Economic theory-wise, it allows freedom of choice and promotes competition, which are the basis of American capitalism, if I may say so. Fiscally, it will stabilize rates and open a world of business opportunities. For safety, multiple sources of electricity, independence, and self-storage are incentivized under CCA. These help prepare us better for heat waves, fires, and other emergencies or disasters. In terms of fiscal benefits, here's a little on what Lancaster, California, did with their CCA, which started in 2015. The mayor, Rex Paris, is quoted as having said, "Our city's ongoing journey to becoming one of the first zero-net-energy communities in the world primarily stems from not being afraid to say yes to all the amazing possibilities." He also said, "Community members need to recognize that the largest, most viewable changes take place at the local level, not at the state or national level. Local municipalities can quickly develop public-private partnerships and in turn enable huge change." What partnerships is he talking about? For example, KB Home in Lancaster built a development of solar-powered homes equipped with EV charging, battery storage, and energy-efficient roofing materials. Other partnerships they have there include one with S-Power Solar to build solar arrays and other projects, and another with Build Your Dreams Electric Car Company. With CCA, San Clemente will be able to capitalize on these types of partnerships in the clean energy sector as well. So let's all say yes to these possibilities and begin the process of conducting a feasibility study. Thank you.
Next, we have Juan Gonzalez, or...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas Public Affairs. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be before you. Number one, I wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate the newly-elected members to this office, hoping to obviously look for the best interests of the community, and you guys have tough choices ahead of you, but again, want to congratulate you. Additionally, I wanted to also hope that you guys had a festive and fun holiday over the couple of last, couple of weeks, and being ready to start the 2019 year. The purpose of my visit today primarily was more primarily for informational purposes. I wanted to share some activity going on at the state level that can impact all of you and all of your residents. There's been a move by the California state in terms of going all-electric. We wanted to share that information as it's been going around, and there was actually a piece of, an op-ed earlier today in regards to go, have the state go all-electric. I wanted to share that, as you are all aware, SoCal Gas provides safe, affordable, reliable gas to, from Visel, the border to San Diego, Mexican border. And we are definitely concerned with some of the moves that the state is looking to do. Last year, they introduced two particular pieces of legislation, one that in committee and the other one was watered down. Essentially, the first bill required that by 2022, any and all new buildings in the state of California be all-electric. The other bill would require that by 2030, all existing facilities within the state will be now moved into, from natural gas to move into becoming all-electric, which would be a cost, essentially, to all of us as consumers. Obviously, with new appliances, modifications in the homes, it'd be something around $700, additionally, to make those modifications, and about close to $300 more per year in terms of the costs. Want to say that primarily, I believe that, to all of your residents and to all of our customers, so the gas was probably one of the lowest bill that people pay, and it's something that people use for their energy. Again, in no way, shape, or form is SoCal Gas against electrification, but it should be something that a customer should have that choice, and that's something the state should mandate you to do. What we're looking for is for a diverse portfolio and working closely with all the cities to just kind of provide you that information and make you all aware. All this is being done with the intent of reduction of greenhouse gases, which we understand, and it's something that should be attacked and obviously managed. And I can assure you, SoCal Gas is doing its initiatives in order for us to take our part in reduction of greenhouse gases. I want to share that we're working closely with an environmental company in the Inland Empire, where we're breaking down organic waste, capturing that and breaking that down and putting into our pipeline as renewable natural gas. Essentially, we're also working with another project in the northern portion of our territory, where we're working with dairy farms, capturing cow manure, breaking that down and putting that back into our pipeline, again, as another force of renewable natural, natural gas. So again, primarily, my purpose is to provide this information and I look forward to working with all of you. So I appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
Next is Tyler Johnson.
All right. Good evening, Council. I know it's January, and I'm here to talk to you about something that goes on in the summertime, but it's time to start working out some plans for this. I am with the North Beach Community Association. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the market at North Beach. Normally, I would do this off the cuff, but I've got a lot to spit out here, so I've written some things down. Quick history lesson on the market at North Beach. For years, our organization, the North Beach Community Association, polled residents and business owners about the future direction of North Beach overwhelmingly. The response was neighborhood events, and the top of that list was Midweek Farmers Market. After years of work, the path was cleared, and we participated heavily in the first iteration of that market two summers ago. At the close of that year, we conducted a detailed survey of attendees and got some great feedback on the improvements that could be made for the following year. Last summer, staff determined to handle the market independent of our group and assistance and ran the week-to-week operation of the market. Unfortunately, under that direction, the event struggled, and we understand that staff is spread thin in parks and recs, especially in the summer months. Since then, our group has had meetings with staff and has put together a detailed plan of action that would get this important neighborhood gathering back on track. To this point, staff's been supportive of our ideas, but we've come to a point where presenting the plan to councils is necessary to allow staff to move forward. Our proposal is simple. Our local nonprofit, the North Beach Community Association, would like to volunteer to take over the manpower of organizing and managing the market and a partnership role with the city, whereas the city would continue to manage the site and set up on Wednesdays, and our group would handle coordinating the participants and promotion of the event in an effort to create a vibrant event that attracts neighbors from across the community to share in a beautiful summer night in the, by the sand in our city's northern gateway. That's the nuts and bolts of our proposal. The common sense part of it is, is that cities are busy. You guys are, you're, a meeting like this is a perfect example. There's a lot on everybody's plate, right? And it's our belief that one of the things that great communities do is they don't just sit back and ask the city to do everything, that there's a, that there's a hand-in-hand cooperation between volunteerism and the effort of the city. And that's what we're trying to put together with this proposal. I know that this is not, because it's coming up in public comments, this is not a time that we get to discuss this, but it's something that needs to get put onto the agenda. It needs to get started, the process of you talking about it, because time ticks quickly. So thank you for your time tonight, and hopefully, this is something you'll also find in your emails. The details of our proposal have been sent to everyone on the council and James, our manager.
When were, when were those sent?
We received it at 6 o'clock this evening, a special event permit application. Tyler and I and Ray Hardu have been working through the process. The special event permit application was the proper way to go through for the market. So they submitted it, and staff will start reviewing it ASAP. So I would just say, the primary difference, I think, we want to make sure that this is not, we're not presenting a special event permit to be like the Oktoberfest. We're not talking about running an event on the side.
Yeah, I understand. You've got one or two more speakers on the same topic, so why don't we, you know, I want us to.
Oh, okay. All right, good.
All right, thanks. So, and next is Tyler Bowden.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. My name's Tyler Bowden, and I'm here to speak to you on the topic of community choice energy as well. So thanks for taking the time. I know there's a lot of issues that you're considering right now, and maybe this isn't top of mind, but just wanted to bring it to this council. We came to speak to the previous council in November about the topic of community choice energy, and we were excited to get a unanimous vote to continue investigating this issue and see how San Clemente might be able to participate in it and potentially incorporate it into our city. I think the reason for that unanimous vote was community choice energy would allow us to take over the management of the power distribution in our community, which would allow us to not only lower the cost of power to our residents, but also generate revenue from the power that's sold in our town, in our region. It would also allow us to incorporate more renewable energy into our energy mix. And as Teri mentioned earlier, it helps to provide more resiliency to our grid in our local area, instead of relying on the whims of an investor-owned utility who really is, is, has to pay tribute to their shareholders. Now, since then, a fair amount has happened in the realm of community choice energy. North County, San Diego cities, several of them are finalizing their feasibility study. I think we may have missed the boat on joining in with them, which may have been the easiest way for us to investigate the feasibility. But they'll be releasing their feasibility study on February 20th at the Encinitas City Council Meeting, which I'll plan to attend. Also, since then, the city of San Diego has continued developing their own business plan for community choice energy. They've already approved a business plan, and they're looking at setting up a joint powers authority. And I believe they invited us, the city of San Clemente, to come and potentially join in with that joint powers authority. And so that's an interesting option for us as well, along with us potentially reaching out to other South Orange County cities to perhaps start our own feasibility study and begin the process of our own joint powers authority. So things are really starting to crystallize, and I think it's time for San Clemente to take some real and decisive, concrete action to determine if this program is right for us, if it's feasible for us, if it would pay off for us in the long term. The 5-0 vote in November to continue investigating was great, but as other STG and E cities are taking action, the issue is becoming more and more timely. So I think it's really time for us to start taking more significant and concrete action, because we don't want to miss the boat. If other cities start to create their own joint powers authority without us, then we'd be stuck with STG and E in the long term, and we wouldn't have the ability to take control of our power grid. So I'd like to just reiterate, March 7th, a group I'm a part of, the South Orange County Community Choice Alliance, is hosting a community forum, a workshop at the Dana Point Tennis Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We'd love to have any community members, as well as electeds of all of our South OC regional cities, come and learn about community choice energy. Thank you so much.
And next, we have Gene James.
Evening, Mayor Schwartz, Council members. I'm going to be Johnny One Note here and talk about a topic that's near and dear to my heart, and that is the police services. And one of the things I think we should look at is, I'm not going to talk about the condition of the station again. I'm talking about something else. One of the things we should, I think we should look at is, you look at other cities in South Orange County, and they actually take their police services or police department, whatever they have, and break that out as a separate line item in the budget. And I think if we would do that, it would give the public a more clear view of how little we're actually spending versus other cities in South Orange County for law enforcement services. When you look at Part I crimes, when you look at calls for service, and compare it to the number of deputies that we have compared to the other cities in South Orange County, you see that we have a very low, low number of deputies, law enforcement officers, versus other cities. The second topic I would like to talk about is, several months ago, I came to this body and discussed the lack of CCTV access that police services has. It's still, to this day, the assistant city manager has priority in viewing the cameras that we have in North Beach and Oleahansen. This is not a hardware issue. This is not a software issue. This is merely a programming issue of giving our deputies access to those cameras. It's a simple fix. I would ask for this body to direct the city manager to make this a priority and get the, get the cameras, give access to the deputies, to those cameras. And then the final thing, the final thing I'd like to discuss, and I discussed it before, is revamping the Public Safety Commission and looking at things a little bit differently. I think last time, there was a focus on structure. I think this time, there should be really a focus on crime in the city and what we can do to prevent crime in the city. A little different of a, of an approach, but I think it would be beneficial to all to take a look at the crime that we have in the city and how we can prevent crime, because it certainly is not going away. And that's all I have. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next is George Gregory.
Evening, Council. George Gregory, North Beach criminal, because I have a ladder on my truck. As you approach definite spending in stuff in the city here, I'd like to suggest that we stop paying $8,000 to rich people to study their building, that we stop subsidizing them with hundreds of parking spaces, when we could use those hundreds of parking spaces for commuter parking to provide for the citizens. Instead of having a train stop at the Pier Bowl to bring customers to the DBA, we should have a train stop at North Beach to take people to their job. This alleviates traffic. It's a great way to fight the toll roads, and it's good thinking. Instead, we keep subsidizing special interests and keep persecuting fellows with ladders on their trucks. Seems a little mean. Seems a little out of place. So the thing is, is, you know, we're not, we're not making any sense, anything we do in this town. We rebuilt the pool house for $6 million. It was a piece of junk. Okay? And then we put wooden windows in them? Wooden window crazy. And that's what they are. You know, they stick, and when they finally come loose, they hit you in the head. So the thing is, and that's just so somebody can have a little business. Well, I'm glad they have business. I'm glad we're using the building, but it was very expensive. Now we're spending a million dollars over Caso Omatica, because they had to have decomposed granite for a parking lot, so it'd be proper and pretty and everything like that. Well, it was a bad decision. Now we're going to asphalt. That million dollars could buy the shekka parking that the county owns and augment our commuter parking, thereby lessening the traffic on the freeway. As we just heard the gentleman say, it's too little, too late. We're not going to make our 41 miles an hour, or whatever heck it was. I don't recall. Forty, I think it was 41.3 miles an hour. So the thing is, we really need to think about what we're doing and what we're spending our assets on. We probably wouldn't be short-funded for police services except for running around persecuting guys with ladders on their trucks. So, and in the meantime, we've got the hobos openly camping on the beach now. Openly camping overnight. Okay? Then we can follow the architectural overlay. I mean, those are blue tarps, not red tarps. So anyways, folks, you know, let's get a little brighter. Let's get a little nicer. And let's rescind this evil, mean, commercial vehicle law. The thing is, what do we expect? All tradesmen are going to come from Santa Ana? Are we going to clog the freeway some more? So the thing is, we need our local tradesmen. You know, I'm a part of this community. If you guys want to fight, let's fight. But don't send the Orange County sheriff after me. They're supposed to be my buds. Okay? So anyways, let's think about rescinding this money that we're spending on Caso Omatica right now. Let the people who run Caso Omatica fund their problem. And let's buy that county parking lot. We need that county parking lot. Thank you for your time.
Okay, and our last speaker is Jonathan Lightfoot.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'll be quick. I have something that's not nearly as important as a toll road to discuss. I just wanted to bring to attention an email I sent recently, just an issue that I have with our code currently in the realm of barking dogs. Unfortunately, I've been to two hearings. I have a third and a fourth coming, because the way that our code's written allows any member essentially to force a citation over the better judgment of our staff, so there's no way for our staff to see my evidence that my dog was at daycare and avoid that. So I just am stuck in this loop with an individual who's repeatedly harassed multiple people in my neighborhood. So that's all I'm going to say. There's an email, and I'd love to follow up with anyone on that. Thanks for your time.
Could we have a motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
All right. We have a motion second. Carry it. All in favor? All right.
Yeah, warrant register. You said the topic is warrant register? That's coming. Closed session report, city attorney.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. However, in connection with that and the report that I would normally give under 11(c), I've been asked to update the council and the public on recent efforts the city's been making to resume enforcement of its illegal camping and illegal sleeping in public places and open spaces ordinances. Those are all on the books. They were recently updated by the city council. However, last year, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals issued a ruling against the city of Boise in a case called Martin versus Boise, where they gave cities a laundry list of things they must do to qualify themselves to enforce these anti-camping ordinances. We've been working cooperatively with management staff and with the Orange County Sheriff to come up with a program to be able to re-initiate enforcement of those laws in San Clemente. One important piece is having beds available for people that you cite who have no other options than sleeping in public places. So having that inventory available, at least in a flex pattern, is something that needs to be fleshed out and some protocols that the sheriff needs to see through. But we anticipate in the very near future, a matter of weeks, a few weeks, we'll be able to come here and announce that that's underway, that it has the blessing of that case law. here and announce that that's underway, that it has the blessing of that case law, and the sheriff's lawyers, and the sheriff himself, and be off to the races in terms of reinstituting full enforcement of those ordinances.
Thank you.
Sorry, real quick, and Scott, hopefully this is the right time, but we are enforcing our curfew on the beach, correct?
Yeah, the curfew on the beach is another matter. In that case, you're just prohibited outright from being there. There's a significant safety issue with regard to people who might fall asleep, and then be caught up in the tide, or something like that. Also, the anti-fire ordinance doesn't apply right now, because it's awfully wet out there, but the ordinance that has in a red flag season, our ability to go out and cite anybody found out there for any reason, still remains in effect. So those two are, thank you for that clarification, in effect and in enforcement now.
Yeah, and just to let you know, our sheriff's department did go and take care of those red and blue tents that were camped on the beach the other night. So, they were removed, and we, the sheriff was there and responded.
Mayor, may I ask a question? The homeless, just issue. I was just going to ask James if he wanted to talk about the no trespassing on the structures that came about this week due to the camping, like six days of camping on the beach relative to that.
Yeah, we asked staff to place no trespassing signs on the North Beach concession stand. And with those signs, once they get installed, that'll give the sheriff's department the authority to enforce the trespassing, no trespassing on those structures.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion without discussion, unless council, staff, or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. The public has requested the removal of items C, D, and S.
CP and F, like in Frank?
No, S hasn't seen him.
Okay. And I would like to have S brought up to first, because for time, I think, didn't you want us to have that first? Or is it okay to keep it in order?
I remember the council brought it.
Okay, CP and S is fine. Any others? Yeah, no? No one else? All right.
Motion to move the balance?
I have a motion, is there a second? Have a motion, a second. All in favor? Motion carry unanimous.
And who was the second? I heard two voices.
There were three, so just pick one.
Just pick one?
Chris, make Chris as fast as you can.
Yeah, Chris did it. That's all.
Okay, so, did you wanna do S? Is that what you decided? Do them in order? Okay.
First up is a stranger to our diocese, Brad Mullin.
Mr. Mayor, I think this has to do with a warrant to my firm on contract, so I'm gonna step down, be able to answer questions.
I prefer if he doesn't step down, because this goes directly to that issue. There's no conflict here. But whatever. I asked council to vote no on BB&amp;K's portion of the warrant register. The total's over $492,000. Annualized, this will be $11,809,000. I know it doesn't run that high, I'm just saying, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. A review of this recent submissions for the last few months shows a billing entry called litigation fees, unknown, totaling $181,000. TCA billing is $153,680 for the last few months, yet the matter is supposedly being built on a contingency. What does this represent? There's also a monthly retainer for $37,944. I assume that's for more than one month, but we don't know that. There's also a non-retainer fee for $71,000. What is a non-retainer fee? What matter does it represent? We need clarity in these invoices for what we're being charged for. Public records request total over $63,000. As you all probably know, I'm the expert at that. You send them, and you get your documents back. What costs $63,000? Since public records request are not privileged, I would ask that those bills immediately be provided to the citizens, so we can review what work was done. The recent billing also included April, November, 2017, January, and March, 2018 bills. I would request that BB&amp;K submit their bills on a timely basis, within one month of when the service is provided, or the city not pay the bills. That's not asking too much, that's what most law firms do. Before approving payment, did staff review each bill and have requisite background to do so? We were promised by Mr. Sund a while ago, that all bills by BB&amp;K would be reviewed by Mr. Mashinoff and Mr. Sund, yet CPR requests show that they don't have the expertise, and apparently haven't done it. I would ask that either they do, or they have somebody else do that for them. I asked the council to direct questions to Mr. Smith and Mr. Mashinoff before approving these invoices. Find out if they were reviewed, find out if Mr. Smith reviewed them. Find out how much of the pre-bills were written off before the bills were submitted to our firm. Find out why we don't have a most favored nations clause, given that we have $2 million a year sold legal bills. We should be paying the least hourly fees, not the most, as a volume customer. Why isn't that happening? The explanation that was given to us before by Mr. Sund was that we're a beach city, it's more expensive. That's nonsense. These are lawyers that do litigation mostly, and they litigate for everybody. Everybody should make a profit, but not at our expense. Let's get the best rates, not the worst. Who's negotiating for us, anyway? I think until we have answers to these questions, that the bills are reviewed, that they're fair, that we have titles for what billing is, not litigation fees, non-retainer, and various other ones, that this council decides tonight not to approve these warrant registries to BB&amp;K, and get full explanations. I would also ask that this council tonight provide the citizens, the district election billing that's totally redacted, virtually totally redacted. I've been told by Mr. Smith that they're being held because of the city council will not waive the privilege. I asked the city council to waive the privilege tonight. And by the way, there is no privilege. Thank you so much.
And Bob Baker.
Good evening, Bob Baker, longtime resident of San Clemente. Laura, would you please pull up the city website, so we can take a look at that? And would you mind going to the agenda notes on April 19th, 2016? We can do it, I did it at home. I want to talk about the warrant register for just a minute. When I was a city councilman, a citizen came to me and said, "Bob, how come we can't see all the checks that the city writes on the website?" I said, "Gee, I don't know, I'll find out." April 19th, 2016. I said, "You know, I don't know, I'll ask the city manager." So I asked George Scarborough, and he said, "Well gee, we can do that." And so, month, a couple of months later, all the checks that the city writes are on this warrant register. So any citizen of San Clemente can go here and see all the checks that the city writes. So, there we go, right there. Yeah, that one right there. So if you want to look through some of the checks that the city writes, one of the things that is tiresome is when people stand up here at this podium, and present themselves as a savior of the city, and "I'm doing all these great things for the city." And then you look through here, and you see, keep scrolling there, keep scrolling. Keep going. Right there. Now, right there in the middle, you see a check number 531982, right over there, a total of $2.613178.27, written to somebody who stands up here all the time, and tells us what a great job he's doing for San Clemente. That's what's in the warrant register.
Any discussion from the...
I'd like to say a few things. Our legal bills have gone up exponentially from past years, about 250%. I know for years, our legal bills hovered around $750,000, because I worked here for a long time. And I'm very supportive of having a third party take a look at our legal bills. And, yep, BB&amp;K is doing the best job, that's great. Let's just go ahead and put this to rest, because there's been quite a discussion over the last year in particular, about the number of lawsuits and how much we've been spending. But I'm very supportive of looking into this, and have an agenda report come back, and hire a third party, new troll, to really analyze the bills. What's, I don't see a problem with that. We have an audit every year of our city and the work we do, so I think it'd be great for us to give that a try.
Being on this council for the last four years, I know for a fact that each and every single bill is scrutinized highly by Eric Sund and our finance department, and by James. And I know that how tight our Assistant City Manager is with the budget, that there is, these bills are looked at. And we know that from the practice of everything that we're seeing. So what we're hearing from one person is not the truth, and we know that. We get awards for our long-range financial plan, and our investment committees, and all of that. So, the one thing that I, I don't see the need at this time to do that, because we know that they are scrutinized, and we know what agreements that we've had for paying these bills, and we are also in litigation. And I do not want anything that would cause our bills to become public information when they are privileged, certain parts that are privileged. So at this time, I don't see the need for that. I think there's no need to pay and spend the money on that person when we know that this is being done.
Dan.
So I think, Laura, I ran on reducing our litigation costs as well, and I think this agenda item is really limited to the warrant register request that we have, so I think we can save that for a better discussion. I will say that I went to James today in response to Brad's emails, and I asked a lot of questions about what these legal expenses are related to. Unfortunately, a lot of this stuff is active litigation, so you have to understand that we can't always tell you exactly what these expenses are. And Brad, I disagree. Bills are protected attorney-client privilege, at least the notations are, so we can't just have anybody review them. But I will say emphatically that people are reviewing these bills. In fact, I did a deep dive today myself, to try to understand what these expenditures are. They're legitimate, the time was efficiently billed. I haven't seen the actual bills themselves, but knowing what the litigation matters were, and the work that's being done, I'm comfortable with these bills. Now, the bigger picture of reducing the city's litigation, I think that needs to be addressed, but tonight's not the time to do that. James, if you have anything you want to add in terms of how these bills are evaluated and looked at, I think the public probably wants to know if there's any way we can sort of give them a general idea, without waiving any attorney-client privilege, what these different areas are. Perhaps that would be helpful.
Yeah, staff reviews, Eric reviews all the bills. He reviews them with the department heads, for issues that resolve, take place in their specific departments. He goes over them with the finance department. I'm confident in Eric's abilities to go through the bills, and make sure that everything is up to date. I think another thing that the city council did, you know, that we didn't do before, but probably in the last 18 months, we started a process, when we go to litigation, when we come to the council with the idea that we may need to go into litigation, we always ask BBK for an estimate of what it's gonna cost to resolve that litigation. We present that to the city council as part of our closed session discussions. And if the council directs us then to move forward with the litigation, then we've been bringing forth staff reports to the city council for approval in open session, where we take action on those budget adjustments, so that we know that we're gonna be spending X amount of dollars, and it's above board. That isn't something that's done in most cities. I can attest that in my four prior cities, I don't remember doing that. And, you know, we may have told councils in closed session that we needed a budget of X for a lawsuit, or to resolve a legal matter, but we didn't go into open session and say, "Approve $500,000, so that we can resolve this litigation." So I think that's a process that we've implemented here in San Clemente, to have some more transparency with the process of legal bills.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Chris?
Oh, thank you. Did we do that with the citizens' initiative? Did we predict that we would spend $81,000 and hire 24 attorneys on that billing? I did do a public records request about a year ago, and did obtain 15 pages of billing for that initiative.
Are we still speaking about the warrant register?
I'm talking about legal bills. And that was mentioned by the speaker in regards to the warrant, that we could see exactly what the taxpayers paid for with that initiative to file the lawsuit, and use our city attorney to do so much work on that citizens' measure that, of course, failed in two years later, when it finally went on the ballot.
I gotta interrupt for a second. I have to agree with Dan on this one. We're speaking about the warrant register, and to be going haywire and talking about things that came up a year ago, I don't think it's an appropriate time. If you'd like to have that agendaed, you can ask for that at the end of the meeting, but until then, we'd be spouting upon your positions, I don't think it's the time or place.
Okay, maybe I'll more appropriately say that that's old litigation from a couple years ago, and we wouldn't really be jeopardizing any position because...
Hold it. Laura, I need you to stop.
Okay, oh, I was just feeling we wouldn't jeopardize our position.
I do need you to stop.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we got off the topic, off the agenda, and we need to stay to the agenda. We have one item that we, the warrant item that was pulled, that's on, and so I'm now asking, is there a motion regarding 6C?
I just made a motion, mayor.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve it.
So just one more comment on that, just if I could, on this warrant register item. You know, so to answer the public's concerns, this council is cognizant of bills, and in fact, that's what I ran on, as did Laura, and we're looking at all of that. I'm comfortable with these particular items. And again, I think we'll have a broader discussion later on, related to legal spending, but again, tonight, I don't think is the night.
With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
So it was carried for yes, one no. Laura was no. Next item is item 6P.
So, D, as in dog.
I'm sorry.
D, as in dog.
D.
I hear D.
Aye, okay. So 6D. Is there a card?
Oh, yeah.
He's CD and S.
That was the one that we thought was 1D from Mark McGuire, so, no, there's no need to pull D.
Okay, now we'll pull 6S.
We need a motion on D, though.
On D? Oh, we pulled it, so we have to move. So it's been moved by, in second?
By.
Yeah, moved by Chris, second by Dan. All in favor? Aye. None opposed. Now, trying to get through this all night, 6S.
Yes, and these are in order.
Thank you. Oh, and I will keep in order. First speaker is Stephanie Aguilar.
Hello, good evening. We've lost the clue of our speakers, just to let you know, for bedtime. So I'd like to introduce myself to the new council members. I see some new faces and some familiar faces as well. So I'm Stephanie Aguilar. I am wearing three hats tonight. First of all, I am here as the president of the San Clemente Skate Park Coalition. For those that don't know who we are, I'll explain a little bit about us. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and the mission of the San Clemente Skate Park Coalition is to improve and expand the existing skate park, and to add additional skate terrain to existing parks throughout the city. We would also like to see a brand-new world-class skate park someday, somewhere, in San Clemente. I think it is important to add that we are a 100% volunteer nonprofit, and our board members have donated countless hours of their personal time to support our mission. We'd like to thank the city for allocating $100,000 to be used for lights at the existing... We'd like to thank the city for allocating $100,000 to be used for lights at the existing skate park. The park opened in the year 2000 and has never had lights. This will provide skaters with many more hours of skateboarding opportunities and hopefully help disperse some of the crowds. The San Clemente Skate Park Coalition raised $50,000 with the help of the community, the Friends of San Clemente Foundation, the, and the Friends of San Clemente Foundation. The Skate Park Coalition just dropped off a check to the city for over $37,000, and the remaining $12,900 was from our work raising money with the Friends of San Clemente the past three years at the SC Open Skate Competition. This is only the beginning. The lights are the first of many projects that we would like to do with the city. We're now shifting our focus to raising money for a skate bowl at the existing skate park. The second hat that I wear is also to, that I serve as the secretary to the Friends Foundation, so I'm here representing them as well. The Friends Foundation, in coordination with the Skate Coalition, was pleased to be able to help raise and incubate over $12,900 for the skate park lights project at Steed Park. The Friends Foundation is committed to work together with the Coalition to raise additional funds in an effort to build more skateboarding-related amenities that enhance and benefit our community youth. The third hat that I wear is that I'm a mom of two skaters. That hat that I wear as a mom is my personal motivation for my involvement with the Skate Park Coalition as well as the Friends Foundation. I want my kids to grow up feeling supported in their sport, and improving our dangerously overcrowded skate park is a way that we can do that. Skateboarding is important to our community, as are the skateboarders who skate here. And I want to show the skaters of San Clemente that we value them and we value their sport just as, as much as any other sport that the athletes in our city play. On behalf of the Skate Park Coalition and the Friends Foundation and as a citizen, I would like to thank the city for supporting our efforts. Thank you.
Next is Rocco Calendra.
He had to leave.
He had to leave. All right.
And Max left, too.
And I worked so hard to get that last name right. Next is Happy Sager.
My name is Happy. Me and my brother Jude skate at our local skate park at least four times a week. We are so stoked to be getting lights in at the skate park, but please don't stop there. We'd also love to get a bowl or a pool put into. I think having more skating obstacles like these will give me more space to, give us more space to our already crowded skate park. I love seeing more kids learn to skate, but our small park doesn't hold very many people, so it becomes crowded and unsafe pretty quickly. The closest bowls to us are at least 30 minutes away. We'd love to stay here in San Clemente rather than drive that far to skate, especially when we have so many kids and locals that skate in our town. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Next is Sorin Capad... You have to pronounce it for us. Capadosia. Dosia? Capadosia?
Capadosia.
There.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sorin Capadosia. I have lived in San Clemente my whole life, and I go to Shore Close Middle School. I've been going to the skate park since I was five years old, and I've always been excited at the thought that lights were going to be put in my local park. I appreciate everyone's, everyone who's making this possible, and I look forward to having fun skating at night with the new lights. Thank you.
Next is David Hennings.
Thanks for having me. I'm pleased to be here. I know a lot of you. My name's David Hennings. I'm a local scoutmaster. In fact, some of our boys are here tonight. I'm also a, a middle school teacher and a parent of three San Clemente students and skaters. I want to thank you for your time. It's been a real pleasure to work with the city over the last, I mean, I started doing this when I was in middle school myself, you know, over, wow, going on 30 years, working to get the first skate park and then lights and to be a teacher and be involved is pretty cool. I'm sitting here, wow, this is like better than Judge Judy, right? You guys deal with a lot of issues. But I want to reinforce that this has been a really great and win-win decision you guys have made to support these lights. Our city, our city skate park per square foot is by far the most-used park in our city, and it has been since it opened 18 years ago. And by adding lights, it's going to be guaranteed be used at its maximum capacity. So it's a very wise use of the city money. Second of all, you know, I want to reinforce that one of our goals as, as teachers and community leaders is to teach the kids of the city that if you get involved in a positive way and don't just complain, you could really make a difference. It's pretty cool. Two of those boys, the Calandra brothers, had to leave. They played in, they played in a local band. And they volunteered their band to play and raise money, and they donated money, this money for the skate park. You guys have seen, they've packed this entire room. They've been at parks and rec meetings. They participated in the master plan. And now to see these kids see the fruits of their labor, I think is really cool. And it's going to spur them to do more good for our city, because guaranteed, they're not going to leave, because none of us do, right? And the last point is, I hope we've proven that, you know, our only motive here is to do something great for the, for the city and for the youth. And as a teacher, I see how important it is for everyone to have physical activity that they enjoy. And, you know, some of our skaters also play soccer and basketball and other things, but some of them, like Sorin, you know, this is a straight-A student, one of the top students at my school, and one of the most magnificent skaters I've ever seen. That's his sport, that's his passion. You know, the 2028 Olympics were mentioned in the, in the, in the transportation agency's message. I think, wow, you know, they should improve the roads so in 2028 we can do the Olympics at the San Clemente Skate Park, right? They'll be built. But anyways, thank you. We really appreciate it, and we're looking forward to, you know, to raise more money and do more good in the city. So, thanks, guys. Yep.
And then I have a card from George Gregory.
What a great idea. Long in coming. It's a shame that we haven't used some of the other lights. We've torn down some of the other sparse parks to put these lights up much, much sooner. One of the biggest concerns I have, though, is a couple of years ago, they blackballed the little scooter kids, the little ones, because the big kids thought they got in the way. So, and they probably do, and it's probably a little bit dangerous. So the extraterain in this plan is really, really important, some beginner areas, some places where the little kids can go with their older kids and, and, you know, be brothers and sisters. So I, it really upset me. I was on the warpath when that happened, when they blackballed the little scooter kids. And so I really want to see this extraterain part really, really happen. And I want to see the big kids start to be a little nicer to little kids and not smoking pot around them and that kind of stuff, too. So anything you guys can do. And if you need to know how to put pipes in trenches and build pole bases and things like that, I'm your man. So, you know, this isn't that complicated. But it's a shame we keep tearing down lights and we have to give them to some broker to send them somewhere else to be used instead of here in the community. Boy, that $50,000 could go really far then. So, and I could probably put the strong arm on a couple of concrete companies or something, too, to get you some concrete if you want. So let me know, guys. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. And before I ask for someone to make the motion on it, I just want to say, of course, you know I'm older than dirt and I've been involved for this city for a little while. But I was chair of the Parks and Rec when we've worked on and put together and built and had that skate park built. So I'm glad it's being used the way it's being used. I'm glad it's working out the way we want it to work out. And yes, I, I think we, we could eventually get more, more spots.
That was your motion?
That was my mention to you to make a motion.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion that we approve item S from the consent calendar, and that's step one for bill that SC.
And do I have a second? All right. Motion's been married, made in second. They're married now. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carry unanimous.
Next is a report from the Public Works Director-City Engineer concerning the possible award of contracts for the purchase, installation, maintenance, and subscription services for electrical vehicle charging stations.
Good evening, Mayor Schwartz and council members. Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director. I don't have a presentation on this item. It's just here under new business because it's a little bit different than what we typically do. Didn't feel right to put it on consent. I know you read the report, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about what I'm recommending you approve tonight.
Yeah. It'd help if you, please close the door back there so we can hear them. Dan, go ahead.
So we had an email from a resident that was concerned about what open access meant for the EV charging stations. So if you could just clarify that for all the public who didn't have the benefit of your response, that'd be great.
Sure. So in the context of unrestricted or open access, this goes to the grant that's supporting these charging stations. It just means that the, the stations aren't behind a locked facility where the public would have restricted or limited hours access. So as your council and the public's aware, it's City Hall, it's an uncontrolled parking lot. The public can come in there anytime. We don't have time restrictions. It's not gate access. So the charging stations will have electricity 24/7. If someone chooses to veil themselves, they can come at any time during the day, any day of the week. And so that's what we're talking about by open access.
But we also discussed, you also discussed, and I'll tell you what you told us in your email, but I thought it was to the point that there's going to be some limitations for how long they can park there and that kind of stuff, so that we don't have them just sitting there for two days or whatever.
Correct. It does defeat the purpose if someone comes in and appropriately charges their vehicle, but then when it's charged, leaves it there all, all day and, and basically blocks the space for some other use. And the apps with these charging stations, and, and people who have electric vehicles know this, you can get notified when your car is done charging. And I'll come back to your council with a report that talks about suggestions on how we, mechanisms we can do that are very common to, to encourage just a limited stay in there, charge the vehicle when you get the notification, you know, move it and so forth, and also recommendations about rates to charge users of those charging stations. I'm just asking your approval tonight because of the lead time to do this. Before we finish the project, we'll be back with recommendations so that you can give us direction on charging rates, turnover, time limits, et cetera.
So basically, we're talking about, we're going to give you a green light to go ahead, but you're going to come back to us with all the fine details of where everything's going to, how it's going to work and what we're going to charge and what, so on and so forth.
Exactly.
With that, there's no other questions for staff? I'll entertain the motion.
I have a question for Joanne. Do you need all of this read? One through six?
I don't think it's necessary. Contracts, yeah.
I approve that, I'll move that we approve staff recommendation for the contract award for electric vehicle charging station.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Mr. Chris.
Thank you.
Oral Communications Part Two. I do have a card.
We have a card from Mr. Tony Machetti Robellino. So we did call him. He's not here. Next one is Larry Culbertson.
Wood windows, no plastic. Larry Culbertson, Historical Society. I'm going out of sequence a little bit here. I'd like to make a comment on item six R. Nobody, nobody, that was the consent calendar. Nobody pulled it, and I didn't pull it because I didn't want to jinx it. I just want to thank you for passing that. That's the, the city's going to allow the Historical Society to use a small room. We really appreciate it. We look forward to that for a long time. I want to thank Samantha Thomas, James, Eric, everybody who helped on that, and former mayor Tim Brown. We're going to be good partners. Great. Thank you.
Next item is establishment of council meeting schedule and possible joint meetings for I submitted a staff report to you so that you could establish your calendar for 2019 to assist in council member and staff vacations. So in the past, council has canceled one or two meetings in either July or August, primarily for vacations. And so I wanted to ask you if you wanted to continue that, and if so, which meetings you wanted to cancel. And also, in the past, you've had a joint meeting with all of your commissions and committees at one time, and we've done it as a dinner. You might want to do that again. You might want to do another joint meeting with no dinner, or another possible suggestion is to have the chair of each commission and committee come to a council meeting and give a report on their activities. So it's up to you, and I'll...
Well, thank you for doing that. Yes, we appreciate that.
So I just have a quick question to help us out. We have a bunch of issues happening, and so I'll look to James and perhaps Scott. Is there a better month between July and August in terms of litigation issues, legislation issues? That would be better for us to be dark?
No, I think July, August, sometime in that timeframe is the best way to go. Joanne and I talked about it today, I think, yesterday, I think was last year or this past summer, we did one meeting in July and one meeting in August. Joanne and I also discussed the first meeting of, of January of 2020, and because of the furlough, how difficult it will be to get out an agenda while having staff out. So, you know, I think from Joanne's standpoint and my standpoint, we would like to look at that, we'd like the council to look at the January 7th meeting, the first meeting of 2020, and I'll leave it to you to decide what's appropriate for July and August.
Well, what I would, I'd lean towards is, is having you guys email to us, you know, recommended dates and let us respond.
So, let me jump in here real quick. In the last six years, we've done, the best way we've done it is we put one meeting scheduling tentatively, tentatively for second week in July, in case there's issues that rise that need to be taken care of, but it's a tentative meet only. The first meeting in July is canceled, the first meeting in August is canceled, and then one year we mistakenly planned for the first meeting in January, and we weren't able to achieve anything. So we always cancel them, no.
Okay. So what you're saying is you can't, you canceled the first meetings of each month.
Of July and August.
And then you also did the second meeting of July.
As tentative.
As tentative, based upon if we needed to meet or not.
Absolutely.
So it would be dark the entire month of July, potentially.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then it will be dark the first meeting of, of August.
I think we did that the last three years, and of the last three, one of those, we actually had to come in in July. I think that was the one you came in for.
That seems reasonable. And then, so, so that's, we're talking about canceling three meetings.
And January.
Well, no. Canceling three meetings, one each, July, August, January, and then making the second meeting in July as tentative.
Yes.
I would go along with that. What the council's tried to do in the past is get a couple of meetings in a row that are canceled so that some of us can go on vacation. I think August is not as good because some of us have kids and they have to go back to school, or our staff has kids. So it's also to give them vacation time. But I think the January meeting is very hard to do, coming off of December, so I'd like to see that.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with the January meeting, and I think we're, we're canceling the first July meeting and we're making the second July meeting tentative, that's an effort that we can try to address that.
I, I think by the beginning of July, I have a pretty good sense from the department heads, what, if, if we need to have that second meeting in July, and I think I can let the council know by the first of July if we're going to do it or if we'll just, we'll just call it. So I think if you give me the latitude with Joanne to, to counsel that second meeting, that we'll have it tentatively, but if something pops up, we'll, we'll do it. If not, I'll call it before, you know, before we go to the holiday.
Okay. So now this isn't agendized, so can we still vote on it?
No, it is agendized.
Oh, it is?
This is what we do.
I didn't see it.
We do this every year to try to figure out vacation.
All right. Then, oh, we mean, I have a little mark by it, too. Okay. So with that, anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I don't think we, do we need a motion?
We need to talk about it differently.
Yeah, we do.
Right. You don't need a motion, but let me just make sure I understand. So we're canceling July 2nd, canceling August 6th, and July 16th, we're tentatively canceling it, but it may come back, right? And then January 7th is canceled.
Right. And it kind of makes sense to cancel the meeting that's two days before the 4th of July anyway. It's going to be kind of crazy. So that's, that would be...
We're doing May as a joint commissions committees, is that what?
Well, in the past, when you've had a joint meeting, the big group, you've done it where there's a fifth Tuesday in the month. So I put in the staff report, let's see, that's, if you stick with that, that falls on April 30th, July 30th, or October 29th.
Yeah, I'd rather have it.
Can I make one suggestion? We are supposed to be sometime reviewing these committees and maybe reorganizing them? We haven't looked at it yet, so I was thinking we should push off the joint meeting till October 29th, just in case.
I would give it, that gives us plenty of time to try to get this, a handle on reorganization. Have we even, even...
We haven't even talked about it.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to create a, our own internal task force or whatever to maybe come up with some ideas.
I think staff was supposed to bring that back to us. They were supposed to look at possible reorganization. Do you remember that? And bring it back to council.
And in that reorganization, can we look at possibly adding another commission? Because I know several people from the public have spoken the last couple of months about Public Safety Commission.
Yeah, I know. We're going to talk about having a reorganization, so...
Do it at that time.
We'll do it at that time.
That'd be great.
I'll bring something back in February, at one of the two February meetings.
That sounds good. So we have nothing to...
Knowing that it might take staff a little longer to figure out recommendations.
Okay. I don't foresee us coming back with recommendations at that. I think we'll come back and ask for direction, and maybe, if I'm hearing Mayor Schwartz right, maybe possibly form a subcommittee to work with staff to get a better understanding of...
Yeah, what I want to do is I want to just, I want to get a direction started. I want to get some idea of concept of how we're going to accomplish it and get some, we need to get something turning and moving. So, yeah, so if you can come back in February.
So we're going to push off the October?
Yeah, we'll push that off to October.
Okay, and what is your preference? Did you want to do a dinner meeting, or last year we did the hors d'oeuvres at the Only Handsome Beach Club, and we did not get a good turnout.
It was very nice. That was actually a very nice thing that staff did for all of our committee members. I think they did not understand that their attendance, this was a meeting.
Yeah.
It wasn't a voluntary, it was an actual meeting, so...
We'll, I'll work with the department heads to make sure that we communicate that a little bit better. But as far as, you know, I don't know, I, I kind of think dinner is better than hors d'oeuvres. Is that where you're going, Joanne?
I liked, it was better for my budget.
Really?
Well, hors d'oeuvres are very time-consuming and labor-intensive, so it's $1,000, it was $1,000 more to have the hors d'oeuvres.
But dinner's less. All right.
And, and those dinners were well-attended, but I think the communication, I think that's part of what the issue is with our committees. That's why we need to look at them.
Yeah. What I'd, can you also canvass your department heads and come back with, no, I don't think we need to do that. We're talking, we've already said...
Yeah, it's October, whatever they want to do.
Yes, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. The next item is overview of sunshine laws. No, I got it.
So good evening, Assistant City Manager Eric Sund. I'm going to be brief in my presentation with regards to the staff report that was provided. This was generated at a request at the December 18th meeting. There were two pieces of direction given that are within your staff report tonight. One was to provide a survey of what other cities have done, and with BBK's assistance, we were able to pull a survey that Lake Forest had done, when Lake Forest deliberated on the sunshine law and ordinances. And then the second component to that direction of the December 18th meeting was to identify what the City of San Clemente is currently doing. So if you refer to Attachment 1, you'll see the survey of the other cities, and then Attachment 2 takes those same criteria and applies what City of San Clemente is doing as it relates to that. And then in the background of the staff report, I provide a very simplistic overview of the sunshine laws and as it relates to the Brown Act and the other rules. And so with that, I kind of want to end the staff presentation, take questions and direction. Both myself, our IT manager Brian Brower, Joanne Bade, the city clerk, and then obviously Scott, the city attorney, can address any questions that may come up from the council, depending on the subject matter. So with that, I'll conclude my report and take direction from the council.
Dan? Thank you. Oh, we have a public comment. So Eric, a couple of questions, actually. So other sunshine ordinances, I did just consider the Brown Act, CPRA, and the Political Reform Act. Did any of them look at sort of including in that construct, like rules of decorum, rules for the way the council is conducting meetings, whether it's Roberts Rules or other types of rules, for example? Did any of the other ones include that in that construct? Because it seems like the way we conduct business and interact would be included in that as well.
From the survey results, no, I did not find that. I can't say that if other cities didn't look at that, I didn't do that depth of research, but that's something that obviously if the council wishes, I can go back and provide that research and come back.
So for myself, and we can talk about this, I think our rules of decorum haven't been updated since, Joanne can help me, the early '90s, which seems a little bit out of date. We also list Roberts Rules of Order as our governing rules for how we conduct our business, and we haven't done that, as far as I can tell, since I've lived in San Clemente. So I'd like to look at ways to update that with something that's a little bit more modern, and Joanne is going to jump in and tell me what the other rules she suggests.
I was just going to say that the city attorney and I are working on that as we speak to bring a proposal, to go to Rosenberg's Rules of Order. They're far easier.
So I'd like that included as part of our sunshine package, because I think, you know, sort of the way we address the public and each other is included in that, and how we conduct ourselves at the diocese as well, so.
Adding to that, I also would like, I saw an update from other cities, you know, we have the rule, and it, that the public is to address the council and not individuals, but other cities go a little bit farther and actually spell out what that is. And they'll even say in the agenda, if you are going to speak to the council, you speak to the council. You do not speak to any one person. They spell it out. So I think that, all of that should be addressed. But I looked at the City of Irvine because they recently did this big sunshine ordinance, and I found that mostly in our city, our transparency website, which, Laura, could you pull that up, our city website? We do a lot of what they have, but what you just said, it comes on in one area that they have, it's called Office of Records and Information, talks about election. They happen to have their agendas, their minutes, zoning, but they have the FPPC, Claims Against the City, any of those would be, would come up. Forms Directory, I don't know if we're able, you know, this, I'm just looking at things that weren't in ours. If you look at our website, look at, that's the city transparency, but go back to the About Us. Just put on that, go down, the city information, go down to the next page so that we don't see that. Okay, that. So you have the city transparency, and you have ethics, practice of government. Contact us, we have all that, our organization chart, our policies and procedures. Go to the city transparency, click on that. Oh, that is it?
Yes.
Okay, there's something else, though, that, city finances, go to that. See, we're missing all of those. No, the city finances is over on the left, above the city organization. Yeah, thank you. So we have our check register, our city budget, our annual financial reports, our long-term financial plan. All of that is pretty much in what Irvine had. What we have more is, we actually have pension information, grand jury reports, we have employment, our benefits and compensation for all our employees. I didn't see that at Irvine. So the only thing that I saw that was kind of interesting is they actually had their general plan update and all of that in, inside their transparency portal. And under ethics and compliance, they gave people numbers for like welfare fraud, child abuse, medical thing, all like that. It just kind of wasn't informational, and I didn't know if we should maybe add something like that. You know, I didn't know if the council, you know, we're talking about the sunshine, you know, bringing everything out, but we do a pretty good job, and we actually had more than Irvine had in ours. It's set up differently, however, but we have a lot in there. So I think spelling out how we do things and how there's conduct, I think that would be appreciated for the public and for us. I think that's a good thing. They also had a forms directory, all the forms for the city, so people just went to that one transparency website and found all the stuff. So I don't know with Brian, if that's possible to kind of look into that, what we could add. We're almost, I think we're pretty much there. It looks like we have more than, than they had on that transparency. We have what, four years of budget. So I just look to try to figure out what we didn't have that Irvine had. And it pretty much was the planning and general plan part and building and safety info. The second was Office of Records and Information, and that just could be on anything. Election, our munich code zoning, ordinances, Claims Against the City was an interesting one, and forms. And then the third was ethics and compliance, and that's where they listed all the fraud, where, I'm not sure where we did that. Remember, we, we added that this last year, how everyone could contact the authorities? So maybe that should be on the transparency portal, if it is, if it's not, I can't find it.
Part of my reason for suggesting the sunshine ordinance at a prior meeting was to really cut down on our costs for public records requests, as Scott has indicated, that's such a large part of our monthly legal costs. And so trying to interpret a way and look into more of what, more information we could put up there, that, maybe even look at our public records requests and kind of get a trend of what we're seeing and put that up there, because it's very costly, and if we had it up there, people could just retrieve it on their own.
Put what up there?
That's what I suggested. We look at a trend and see what, what are the public records requests we're getting.
To Councilmember Ferguson's inquiry, the biggest trend, and Scott can opine if I go off, is the email requests that reside within our public records request. And so to give you an example, a real-life example of a request that we received that asked for a certain date range of emails with certain search word criterias to look for, in some cases, we'll, we'll produce upwards of 5,000 documents that need to be reviewed. Those documents are reviewed from a, from a privilege standpoint, they're reviewed from a liability standpoint, they're also reviewed if they actually fit the criteria of the email, because hypothetically, someone may be asking for, I want all the emails on Project A, but the search criteria, some emails from Project B are produced, and then those are screened out because they don't fulfill the request of looking at Project A. And so a lot of the time that we spend is with email searches, and, you know, pursuant to the Public Records Act, you know, the city has an obligation to respond in a, in a reasonable fashion to these public records requests, but we don't have one person dedicated to public records requests. So an IT analyst wears the hat of looking at the email search criteria, so they allocate a certain amount of time a week to do the email search criterias. And then we have a records coordinator who does wear the hat of public records, but they also wear the hat of indexing all of our ordinances, you know, uploading those into our imaging system. And then we also utilize BBK as a, as a process for our public records as well. So there's a number of processes that have to be done by people to screen out those things. And so we do the best that we can internally before we utilize BBK. We, you know, we take out duplicates, we screen that aren't applicable, but then there are certain things as it relates to privilege. A lot of our public records requests are requesting subject matter that is a litigation-related matter. So then we do need BBK to verify those, to make sure that, you know, we're not exposed and we're not, you know, having any liability issues on the city's behalf with the release of those documents.
Yeah, and so bottom line is, we're not going to be able to, to eliminate a lot of the PRA's, because we're not going to be posting every...
Right, no, no, absolutely not.
Every text, every, every communication on the website.
Right. Now, how, are we still only uploading two years of information, or are we going a little bit farther back? Because when we outsourced the website, I don't know, four or five years ago, we eliminated a lot of information.
No, so, what, just to clarify to Councilmember Ferguson, we hired a company, Vision Internet, to create a new website for the city. However, we maintain it internally with city staff. So Cade, somewhere out there, is, is the webmaster for the city. Again, he wears many hats, but one of them is the webmaster to maintain the website. And then we have super-users in each of the departments, we call them super-users, that have to maintain their respective department websites to make sure that the information is accurate and updated. This year, 2019, Brian and Cade are going to be doing a walkthrough with all of the department heads to go over their websites to make sure, A, information's accurate and updated, and maintains that, that maintenance of it. With regards to our website currently, and a good example, if you go back, if I may, if we go back to the transparency, and we just go to agendas, you know, as of right now, we have eight years of available agenda information.
We still have 20, but eight is sufficient.
And, and even if someone was to say, could I get something from 2010, 2009, we'll produce it. And granted that some of our electronic documents are not as robust in the early 2000s because we weren't as technology savvy as we are today, but most of these have hyperlinks to be able to drill down to the specific agenda report and the supporting documentation that's brought forward. And then, you know, the other thing that we didn't touch on is that we've got probably upwards of about five years on our YouTube channel of all of our public meetings. So not only the council meetings, but the planning commission meetings and any special meetings or hearings that we conduct are up there as well, so they're available to the public as well. It is important to note, as part of our IT strategic plan, this fiscal year, we'll be coming to the council very, very soon to seek approval for a new legislative software system that will basically manage all of the city's documents, kind of under Joanne. And so that will change a lot of this for the better. While this is accessible, the vendor that will probably be coming back with a recommendation will have more robustness. So for instance, you might have seen this at their council meetings, you can watch the council meeting live while you see the agenda, and if you go back to look at the council meeting, you can click on the specific agenda items to jump specifically to that part of the meeting to pick up where that item was discussed. Cade does a great job of indexing now on YouTube, but it'll even be more robust on that. So we'll see some major improvements with regards to that, and it'll also affect our agenda report process and electronically create that. And so one of the things that you'll be potentially getting is iPads or tablets, and no longer the binder, with regards to your agenda packet. And I know one council member's shaking his head, and we're aware of that concern from him as well. So we'll address that, but, but that'll be something that'll be available as part of that as well. And we can still print a binder as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've given them direction there, any other thing on this topic?
Let me just clarify to Councilmember Bade. So we're looking to bring back to the council via Joanne and Scott, basically, rules of decorum. So that'll come back as a separate item for the council to deliberate on, based on Joanne and Scott's findings. And then to Councilmember Ward's point, you know, we're talking about the forms, we'll look into that. The general plan, I think that's something that I know that now Gabriel Perez is here, that he'll be looking to champion, because we were doing something originally back in the day, but we ran into some technical issues, that that'll be coming back. And then also, you talked about ethics and compliance, which I'm sure will be part of Joanne's agenda report as well.
All right, and we have one card left on this topic, that'd be Brad Mullum.
You know, I think I championed this for, what, 10 years now? So I'm really glad we're doing, I want to comment on a few things that Ms. Ward said, even though she said we shouldn't address individual people, I think that's First Amendment violation not to be able to. But I applaud her because I think she was right on every single word she said. So I think that in this case, Kathy's flat-out right, we should do everything she said and more. We should put everything on the city website, and she had great ideas. I think the city council should adopt every one of them. San Francisco has a very robust, that's what we should look at, sunshine rule. One of the things they do is waive delivered process privilege. process privilege. We should also waive that. But what's missing from this report, and I thought Eric did a great job on the report, it was as good as I've seen, and I thought his presentation was even better than his report. What we don't have on the city website is OCR documents. Every document posted on our website should be searchable. Right now, they're not. So anything that's posted should be posted searchable PDF, not non-searchable PDF. That's critical. It's been asked for years, and I think it's time to adopt that. Second thing is, what's missing from Eric's presentation was this. Every document the city produces should be put up on the website, as far as I'm concerned, every single email. Contemporary, if there's a question of privilege, let's check it out at the time. Most documents, most emails are not privileged. We know which ones are, if they're directed to the city attorney. They're directed to the city manager, assistant city manager, inside staff, they're not privileged. If they involve litigation, fine. But all non-privileged documents should simply be posted. That would get rid of all CPRA requests virtually, because you can search yourself. Dan's a lawyer, he uses LexisNexis. He doesn't go to somebody, he searches what he wants to search for. That's what I do, that's what I do on the city website now. And by the way, I have those 18 years or so of back documents from the city, if anybody wants them. If you want them, I'll give them to you. They're not searchable, which is a problem. And believe it or not, they've done a much better job. Old city council agendas items were just listed by number. You couldn't, you still can't tell what they are. That's why what we should do, and their software will do it very cheaply, is post them all searchable. So if you want to know what happened in 1997, and it's a matter of the TCA, you could search for TCA and find it. Right now, you'd have to know when it happened, what happened. Very hard to do, like with minutes and things like this. So what my suggestion is, is open up the documents to include those. Maybe that's an incremental step, maybe it's more expensive. But we can do it going forward. I think we can use the discretion of the city manager and his office to decide what documents are, should be private. Obviously, personnel documents cannot be posted. But other documents can be, and then we're not going to go and make CPR requests for internal documents. It'll save the city a lot of money and give the citizens they want for. And again, thank you, Kathy. I think you're spot on on this. Thank you.
Brad, just tell them what the actual OCR is.
So when you do a document in Word, and you do an agenda report, you then save it as a PDF document. You have two ways of saving it, searchable or non-searchable. What's being posted now is non-searchable. So if you want to search, let's say, I want to search all motions by Hamm.
What does the actual OCR say?
Oh, optical character recognition. So what you can do is then say H-A-M-M, and it will cite every document that says Hamm in it, right? Right now, you can't do that. Why? You actually have to turn off OCR-ing. In other words, the city's intentionally pulling the information off the website rather than putting it on. It automatically stays in searchable form unless you tell it not to.
Yeah. It takes an awful lot more bandwidth, and it takes more time, and you've got to have more expensive software to be able to do that. You know, I've got Adobe Pro, and I deal with all the time. But you, I mean, generally, we've got just, we're making copies, and we're just scanning the copies and putting them in. So it's as if you took the original document before you made a copy of it, in a Word form, and then it's much easier then to bring it in the system. Anyway, thank you, Brad. With that.
Kate, city manager?
Would it be okay to give an update regarding the monitor issues that were raised earlier at the substation, and kind of what we're looking at there?
Sure. You know, currently, there is one computer at the substation, in the investigation bureau, that has access to the city's CCTV system. With that, I've been having a conversation with Chief Peters. I directed him and Brian Brower, our IT manager, to have a further discussion about monitors in the substation. Brian has his marching orders to provide three monitors per Chief Peters' request, one in the briefing room, one in the report writing room, and one in the admin sergeant's office, so that the officers have the ability to watch the city's CCTV system. We have a number of cameras throughout the city, they'll have access to it. I think we'll also work to refine some working orders, priorities with the cameras, because we do have cameras that are controllable with zoom in, tilt, and pan options. The cameras are also used by the Marine Safety Division. So we'll have to work through some things as to who has priority with what cameras, and when, and establish a protocol for communication between Marine Safety and the Sheriff's Department as we work through that. So we are in the process of looking at that. We started that back before the furlough, and Brian Brower and Chief Peters are putting it in place now.
I think that's a great asset for Sheriff's Department, and appreciate you jumping on that.
City attorney?
I forgot one thing, too, when I spoke earlier about this item. We've been working on looking at regulation of behavior on train platforms. Remember, the council previously regulated aggressive panhandling in sensitive areas like ATMs inside of buses and the trolley? Because you're a captive audience, you have to be paying attention to getting on, getting off. And so we've been thinking about the train platforms. We have to, they're controlled, there are specific entrances and exits to them. And in our minds, it's a pretty simple thing, to be able to say that you can only be passed the entry to the platform when you have a Metro Pass, or an Amtrak Pass, or an actively purchasing one. So we've drafted that up. We think that meets constitutional muster, having people in people's ways or getting on and off the train. Unattended parcels and duffels around transportation areas create obvious problems and concerns. And so we've drafted that up. The sheriff asked, before we brought it to you, that they have a chance to look at it, because they'd like to use it uniformly on all Orange County train platforms, if the need is there to do it. And so we forwarded that on. But I know I'd mentioned that, we'd mentioned that to you individually, and wanted to tell you that that's coming forward. They're looking at it now, because they'd like to do one policy everywhere that conforms.
There were a couple speakers tonight on the Community Choice Energy, and I've actually met with one of them. He actually serves on our Human Affairs Committee as well. And he had indicated that the group, the South Orange County Community Choice Energy Group, is thinking of putting together a white paper, because they appreciated the council embracing the idea to look into community choice energy. And I had, he had asked me, where do we go next with this? What would you think about them bringing back their white paper to present to us? And of course, they'd look at, I said, well, to be fair and balanced, you want to look at all the energy providers, yeah, general white paper researches, some, I don't, I'll look to James. They were a little bit unsure of what the next step was on that.
Staff just recently went down to North San Diego and met with them, per the discussion that we had back in November, December. So they had a working group down there, we went down there. It looks like, you know, the opportunity to join that group, we were too far, they were too far along for us to join it. Staff was going to look at some other options. I'll get an email out to the council as to where we stand. I'll have Michael Johnston send that out to you. He's heading up the process and give you an update on where we're going with it.
Yeah, because I heard there was a group going together up north. So if we can jump in on it, let's talk about it.
There. I also thought that that was coming back to the council as part of our long-term financial planning.
We talked about that as being part of the process, because if we have to go alone with doing our own report feasibility study, it could cost us 60,000 to $100,000. So we were looking to join with a group that was already established. If I remember correctly, we have some limitations here in South County, because we're SDGNE. And once you get north of us, there's some issues with Edison being the power provider. So we're looking to see how we can work around that, if we can.
What is San Juan Capistrano?
SDGNE.
I think they're looking into it, too.
We should probably.
Have we reached out to them?
I'll reach out to them.
Yes. And, you know, in North County, there's four cities. So bigger wasn't particularly their plan. It was, it's Del Mar, and Sinetis, Carlsbad, and Oceanside. And as the gentleman alluded to tonight, that goes to their city council on February 20th. So that'll be, I think, helpful for us to read as well, glean from that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you have anything?
I just want to commend the Build It SC folks on coming to fruition for some plans they've had for at least two years. It's going to be a great addition. I look forward to what they're going to do next. So, thank you.
Dan?
I have a long list, so I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I can. So I'd like to have agendized a policy regarding placing items on the agenda for city council. I think our current policy is that it takes a consensus of council members, and I think it should take one council member to request an item. And the reason for that is, it protects folks that are in the minority to get things heard by what they would like in the city. And I think we can evaluate in terms of the urgency that we address those items. But I don't think it should take a consensus of council to get something put on the agenda.
I'd love to find out what other councils do, too.
Yeah. So actually, Dana Point just changed to require a consensus. There's quite a bit of outcry there, because the problem is, is you marginalize folks that are in the minority on the council if you don't let them put something on the agenda without consensus of the council. So.
Yeah. But the problem we end up with is an agenda that will take us through midnight every time. So that's why there's got to be a balance, there's got to be some type of trade-off and control. So we don't have
Which is exactly why I wanted it agendized.
Chris, Dan, I see your perspective in being one of the people in the minority. I have to disagree with you. I don't think it's a good idea. I can't support putting that on the agenda for discussion.
Well, let me finish. Part of the reason for doing that is to discuss the issues of that. And I agree that not every item should be put on the agenda. But at a minimum, it should be, you know, addressed with urgency in terms of whether there's consensus or not. If there's not, and, you know, it takes six months to get an item on the agenda that somebody wants to look at, so be it. But you can't sit there and tell people, especially those that are in the minority, and I'm surprised to hear you oppose me on this, because, you know, if three people decide they don't want something heard, then there's a segment of the community that could be marginalized through, frankly, your voices. So I'll finish that. Let me just finish my list and.
Can we talk about that one?
Sure, after I'm done, sure. I just want to finish my list real quick, because I want to get it agendized. So the North Beach restroom contract, I know I had a discussion with James, there were issues with the restroom. It's only being serviced one time per day. And frankly, I was over there several times over the weekend, and it was disgusting. So I'd like to have that item pulled back for a future agenda.
Sure. I talked to Randy Little. Randy Little agreed that the North Beach restroom needs to be cleaned more than once a day. Tom Bonnigut and Randy went to the vendor, and they came back with a contract amendment today to me, to add one cleaning a day for $9,700 for the rest of the fiscal year. So I was going to go ahead, and under my authority
Perfect.
Go ahead and add that extra cleaning, and then it'll be part of the budget for next year.
Great. I've heard a ton of issues on Del Rio in terms of traffic, speeding, noise otherwise. I don't know if this is an appropriate item for an agenda, but if we can have a discussion with UCSD about patrolling that street in terms of speed. I know people are going 70 miles an hour down the road.
Pass it on, we don't need to agenda that.
Sure. That's why I'm, decals on the trolley. It's been a pet peeve of mine since they've been put on there, but it says Shorecliffs. Shorecliffs is not a stop. The outlet is a stop. So I'd like to bring that back to look at changing the decal, because it's
Where did you talk to them?
I thought you guys told me not to.
Yeah, the problem with that is it's advertising on city property, and we've been, for the most part, opposed to that from start to finish. So unless we're going to change our policy on advertising on
It's confusing to the public when it says Shorecliffs, but it doesn't stop at Shorecliffs. So I'm happy to discuss that again and put it back on the agenda. But as it reads right now, it's telling people to go to a stop that doesn't exist. So.
Can you check with staff? Because I think there's more to it that we said than that. So maybe we just need an update of what we decided.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind going ahead and let that go on to an agenda when the staff can get back to us on the report, as to the history on it, and what went to some of the decision-making.
Yeah, we can talk. Let's talk about it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Sure. Is there a policy for city council donations to a fund? So I've been appointed to the San Joaquin Board, and I'm going to donate all that money. Is there a pot of money that we can set up for things like bikes for the sheriffs, things like that? Because I have no desire to keep that, and I'd rather donate it to the community. Is there any policy on that?
I think, I think the, Mike, the Sheriff's Department has a fund for donations, correct? Yes, please. I believe we have a fund with the Sheriff's Department. I think we also have a fund with Parks and Rec for Parks and Rec programs. I think Eric can talk about that. We call it the Wish Book or something.
We do. We have a, and I'm going to get the technicalities, 503C, did I get that right?
501.
I'm accomplished for the night. 5013C. Dang it, I missed it by a number. We do have one. It's a group called Scale. And basically, what they've done for us is, they've done some fundraising, and they've been able to, every year, been able to put on a deputy appreciation dinner at the end of the year. And deputies and their wives, and their husbands, significant others, are San Clemente's got the most female deputies of any city around, and they're all extremely good at their job. So it's a dinner at the end, and typically, some companies like Oakley and 511 will do like door prizes, and they'll raffle them off. And so it's not a robust thing, but it's nice. It's nice for the deputies, and especially their spouses, to be appreciated for the job. So that's the group.
So you guys will take my TCA money, then?
I have, I'm not answering nothing on record of whatever that means.
I'd talk about that one.
So, okay, great.
He said yes, so.
So the North Beach Market, I think there was a proposal. I assume we're working through that with Tyler.
Yeah, I've been having conversations with Ray and Tyler for the past couple months. I asked them, I told them that the correct process for going through it and everything was to turn in an SEP permit. I saw that come across my phone tonight. I thought they turned in an SEP, Special Event Permit Application, and it looks like it's a PowerPoint presentation with some of their ideas.
So that's for an operator, though, right? Because my understanding, or not for an operator, but to actually run the whole thing themselves. I think they wanted to partner with the city. Is that?
My, it's been, it's been a conversation that we've been having about them taking over the operation of it, and we would handle the setup of it. And some of their wants were to have it on Thursday nights, whereas right now, it's on Wednesday night. Thursday night is a problem during the summer with the beach concert series, with the staff being committed to setting up for beach concert. But what they've told me is that they're willing to take a hiatus on those Thursdays where there's a conflict. I think there's three, three, three or four Thursdays during the summer where it's a conflict. We've talked about shortening up the time period to a Memorial Day, Labor Day-type function. We've talked about changing the hours. I've told them that I'm supportive of all their wants, and as we've talked about it in the past. But until I review the PowerPoint presentation and talk it over with staff and with the community association, I really don't know what's there and what I'm supporting. I can tell you what I've been supporting, what I've told them I'm supportive of, but I don't know that it is represented in the PowerPoint that they provided tonight.
Okay.
Are you the rep, Dan?
What's up?
Are you the North Beach rep?
I am.
Have you met?
I met with them, Ray and
So yeah, so you're dialed in on exactly what they want?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I say
That's what I'd like to accomplish.
Yeah, let's bring that back and do
I know. We need to actually have
Well, I think
So you've reviewed, though, my point is, you've reviewed what they're looking for exactly.
In large part, yeah. And part of the issue for them was, you know, we were requiring them to present, and their thought was, look, we want to partner with the city. We're happy to run it, but do they need to submit a full-on permit application for that process?
I thought that was the best mechanism, is them being the operator. I told them that I would waive the fees for the application and do it. Typically, we charge for something like that, and I was looking to partner with them.
Okay. Okay.
And, you know, I think before the break, they asked me, where are we at with it? I said, submit the SEP permit, and I'm ready to go, so.
I'll circle back with them on that, then.
Yeah.
Figure out.
Let me review the PowerPoint tomorrow with Samantha. We'll go from there.
Anything else?
Yeah, my final one, and one I'm going to throw you under the bus on as well. Steve and I met with a bunch of nonprofits earlier this week that were concerned about our sponsorship policy that we adopted at the last council meeting. They had a number of concerns in terms of how it was going to be enforced. They didn't think it was clear, and their most concerned portion of it, what they didn't get, reach out from staff ahead of time, so they wanted us to pull that back so we could have a hearing on that, they could express their concerns, and we could decide if the policies could be.
I have a poll, I have it on agenda.
Yeah, well, I was, I think it needs to be done at a, at a public meeting, so I'm doing that now with you.
Can we talk about how we agendize things? I would like to talk about how we've done it in the past. Generally, we are nice to each other, and if somebody wants to agendize something, we generally, if the council wants to do that, we do that. We have never not agendized something that someone wanted to do. However, sometimes there's an idea, I remember some of the things I brought up, where other council members said, you know, we don't really need to agendize it that way, or can you wait till this, or in conjunction with this, and I agreed to it. So we don't always automatically do, because sometimes there's a better way, but we've never, we don't freeze anyone out and be disrespectful and say that you're, we're not going to agendize.
Yeah, the only agendized issue that I've seen is when they wanted to add it to the agenda that night, and we voted on it, voted it down. We didn't want to have it on that night, we wanted to do more.
And that's council's prerogative to do, but am I wrong, you know?
I can think of maybe less than five times in six years that it's happened that someone brought up an issue.
Yeah.
Well, I think, okay, so five times in the last six years. So what if that was a critical issue to certain segment of the community that had heard?
It wasn't.
Well, I think that's the point of representative government, and that's why they elected five of us, and so the majority could determine.
Well, that's my point, is so that all five of us can get something on the agenda. That's, that is the epitome of a democracy. If you're saying, I want to oppose something, maybe it doesn't happen that often, and hopefully we all get along very well here, Chris, and Kathy and Steve, but to the extent we don't.
Might I suggest we cover that when we also are covering the rules that we're talking about as far as agenda, how we run things? Because that would be part of that.
Part of an update.
Yeah. So why don't we just include on that?
I need clarification on Dan's last item, though, because it got a little muddied. So is there anything coming back on Dan's last item, or are you just making a point?
No, there's going to be, we're going to bring it back to what the business community has asked, the ones that are running those events and what we discussed and that, and we're going to bring it back to present to the council.
So we're going to reconsider the item, or we're just bringing back a presentation?
We're going to reconsider the item.
We're going to reconsider the item.
Because they didn't comment, there was no one here to comment, right?
Per a lot of the nonprofits that we spoke with, nobody reached out to him ahead of time on the policy. They didn't have a chance to input, and I think we should, at a minimum, at least give them that opportunity.
Yeah, so that's why we brought it, we're going to bring it.
I need to go on the record of opposing that we're going to bring it back for reconsideration, but I will definitely rehear a special presentation on this people speak, but I'm not going to be supportive of bringing it back for reconsideration.
Anyone that votes in the majority.
Can bring it back, exactly. Exactly.
Well, in the event, you know, it's going to come back, and then we can, we'll be voting on it then, whether we want to proceed on that. Okay. All right. Where are we?
We are at ordinances. So the first item is ordinance 1666, second reading.
He doesn't want to do that. Captain?
I move that we adopt staff recommendation and adopt ordinance number 1666 entitled an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Clemente, California, amending Chapter 8.28, Health and Safety, Solid Waste Management of the Code of the City of San Clemente, California, to incorporate new state mandates, city rules, and regulations.
Second. We have a motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And ordinance 1667, second reading, relating to stormwater runoff.
Why not? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve staff recommendation to adopt ordinance number 1667 entitled an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Clemente, California, deleting Chapter 12.16.080, Control of Irrigation and Stormwater, and amending Chapter 13.40, Stormwater Runoff, Control of the Code of the City of San Clemente, California, to comply with the NPDES MS4 permit to prohibit irrigation runoff.
Do I have a second?
Second, then.
We have the motion, and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry unanimous. And then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, no.
The next, you have to.
You have to read it. The next regular, I'll motion to adjourn.